One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I'll make final statements. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the adopted agenda, which I have mentioned to the adopted agenda as presented.
Seven.
And second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I just would like to note, for the minutes that we are missing Mr. Parrish this evening, he had a previous engagement and did notify me in advance that he is unable to attend. So we are one short, it's Mr. Fraser, Sir Wilson, St. Don Hey, and myself, Miss Smith. That takes us to the item that we're called here for. I see on the agenda the CARES Act CRF distribution. Mr. Curry, can you queue this up for us, please?
Yes, first, we've already compared time. Excellent. Board has discussed the distribution of CARES Act funds several times now, originally after the first allotment provided by the state and then recently after the second allotment was provided by the state. We've carried on the listing of the allotments, or, I guess, funds that have been assigned by the board for different purposes, and tracking table that is attached to the agenda. It's also available here to put on the screen in editable format, and leave it to the board to guide how we would advise to move through that and print it out for each of you for your convenience.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I guess the most efficacious way to move through this perhaps if it's agreeable to everyone would be to hear from the stakeholders that may wish to speak to the items on the spreadsheet and then work our way through them as we did on the previous occasion. Anyone that wishes to speak that's a stakeholder in the spreadsheet, please feel free to raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. Name rules as normal, board supervisors need to apply. Please address your comments to the board, and keep your comments to five to 10 minutes, and we should be all set. Please do identify yourself by the name and business you represent, or the district that you're from. Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Rachel.
Gary H. Hampton, Chair of Headwaters Foundation. I'm here specifically to thank you for the care you're taking with distributing these essential funds. I know there's a lot of demand, and this is an unprecedented crisis for our county, and it can't be easy going through lists like this, deciding who gets what. I'm here to say thank you for the support that you've given the school for the Wednesday program. It's already, I'm hearing from parents, especially people are saying that it's actually, the kids are coming home more up, more enthusiastic, and more excited than they've been, and that's always good news. There's 10,000 before you tonight in a school request that would probably be administered by Headwaters as coordinator, facilitator, to try and create out-of-school enrichment activities for students going forward. And we've begun to identify some sites, we've begun to sound out the community, see who might be willing to volunteer to lead these enrichment activities, which could be sports, could be music, could be arts, could be literature, it could be anything we can get a group of students who want to do. But the idea is to give them maybe one time a week, when they're away from home, with some peers, with an adult, doing something that is of special interest to them. This is not because we don't think they're getting enough instruction, or that we have any cause to be concerned with the model that's being used for public education or Rappahannock. It's simply because, given the unique circumstances, especially middle schoolers and teens, need opportunities to be away from home, and we know how important peer support is, always. But especially during crisis times, that age in particular, looks to their peers to help support them in create emotional and mental health. So while it is an activity that looks perhaps recreational, not too essential, we have reason to believe that it is really critical right now to do everything we can to try and support students' emotional well-being. So, as you go through your list and as you weigh different needs, thank you for your service, thank you for your attention to all the concerns that confront us in this committee, but I especially ask you to be aware of the unprecedented of our families, especially working families with kids in school. But also now, we're sort of focusing today, tonight, on how this grant might help us put in place a program, especially for older middle schoolers and teens. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rachel. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
For the board's benefit, that's Row 7B. I think we're speaking to enhance extended learning and enrichment.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Grove from the Sterneville Hawthorne District, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rappahannock Center for Education in my role as board chair and administrator. Since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, the Rappahannock Center for Education has taken steps to make and keep our students safe, our buildings secure, and the high quality of our instructional program unchanged. COVID hit us just as we were in the last weeks of our spring healthcare training session. We helped our students finish class virtually by loaning them computers, arranging for internet connectivity, and fielding many calls, as our students suggested, not only to Zoom classes, but also to all the issues that the pandemic created for them. When classes were finished, 28 students needed to take their certification exams. Working in cooperation with Rappahannock High School, we were able to have our adult students tested at one of the high school computer labs under strict conditions: masks, temperature checks, distancing, no personal items. Tests were done over a six-week period using high school guidance counselors and teachers as prompters. We are grateful to the Rappahannock Public Schools for their support and cooperation. No classes were held during June and July to allow for proper cleaning and preparation of the building. Significant purchases of supplies and equipment were made to create take-home training kits, such as practice arms for phlebotomy. And the classrooms were reconfigured to allow for proper spacing and capacity limits. A steel gate was purchased and installed to prevent anyone from entering the classroom area from the headmaster's pub space. High-quality thermometers, better interior signage, and additional lab equipment was purchased to ensure student safety and spacing. Investments were made in video equipment to enhance the quality of the Zoom experience, including cameras, microphones, and speakers. To improve the quality of instruction, we identified and purchased high-quality digital materials, including online textbooks, videos, quizzes, exam prep, and lectures. On August 17 and 18, we began two classes with in-person instruction for 10 adults each in our medical assistant class. These classes, for a total of 20 adult students, will continue until the end of September, after which they will be taught completely online. On August 24, we began in-person instruction for 10 high school students in the nurse aide class and 15 eighth-grade students in a new exploration of healthcare careers class. These will continue in person at the high school and at RAPCE, and less forced by circumstances, of course, to move online. We are committed to serving our students by providing them with new career pathways. Since several foundations have pulled back on awarding grants, we will appreciate any assistance you can give us. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that, and it might not be fair to tag on, but I have stopped in the RAPCE, and it's very impressive to see what you have done in order to continue to offer the classes that you do. And just congratulations on being able to figure all that out. I know it was very challenging. You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Ritter.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you night. I'm here because I'm asking you to provide money for a no-touch, handicap-accessible restroom at the park, which, and as you may have noticed, the park is being used to its full extent, and it's really difficult for people who are handicapped to use the porta-johns. And it's going to get, I think, I don't see the virus ending anytime really soon, and the only place in the county to me that has sufficient space and is covered is the park. So I think we'll continue to see high use of the park, and it would be, we now have the handicap-accessible parking, and it would be really wonderful to be able to provide a heated restroom for all persons, including those who are handicapped. And my colleague, Tony, will give you the specifics on the bathroom, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, the county administration. I'm Tony Van Adher. I come from the Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I represent the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority in the role of the vice chairman. And I'd just like to echo what Steph had to say. We have a master plan at the park to provide and maintain and operate recreational facilities for the members of the county, for people of all abilities and all ages. We have, in our master plan, two goals that actually speak to that, and we have implementation strategies to execute those goals. Steph alluded to the parking spaces that we put in in 2019. We put in two accessible parking spaces in the parking lot and a walkway to get to the pavilion so that people with mobility challenges can get to family events and other events at the pavilion. What's missing is a restroom, and that's next on our game plan. We have scoped that out and gotten some budgetary quotes. We put in a request to the county for fiscal year 2021 for a certain amount of money that would match other funds that we had. The amount that was allocated to the park authority was less than we requested, so we went out for other grants. We went to the PATH Foundation, we went to the Loeb Foundation, and we were denied on both counts. And then, as you all know, we were all hit with a coronavirus pandemic, and that hit us really bad in the wallet because our fundraising and income that we get from pavilion rental has put us about $13,000 in the hole this year. And without any grants, we're really looking at furring this project unless we get consideration for this CARES funding. I'd like to mention that we have contacted both contractors who gave us the budgetary quotes, and they are able and willing to execute this work as soon as we give them the green light and complete work for the end of the year. The scope of work basically will take part of the pavilion structure and expand it, and then subdivide the floor space into a restroom and storage room. And we will provide no-touch facilities, so no-touch faucets, no-touch toilets, no-touch urinals, the doors will have self-opening capability. So it'll be really a facility for the county that will be suited to any kind of future pandemic that we may have. We tend to winterize it so that we'll be able to have year-round access, and that way we can eliminate the need for the porta-johns. As I said, our contractors are available, and the park authority is ready to execute. We just ask for a favorable consideration in this proposal. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Van Adher. Is there anyone else wanting to speak? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Curry. I'm Teresa Wood from Hampton District. I'm here today representing the businesses at Rappahannock. First off, I'd like to say thank you all very much. You've been very generous with our local businesses, and we really do appreciate it. I submitted a presentation to Mr. Curry, which I believe be distributed to you all today. It's just an update on what we're doing with some of the funds that were entrusted to us to push out to the business community. It explains how we're going to implement the grant program that we had asked for funds for. I think on the agenda this evening, too, we have been forth a letter at the last meeting requesting some additional funds. I realize there are a lot of hands reaching out for funds right now, and it would be ideal if we would have a $150,000 grant program. However, we are willing to accept less than that because we realize there are a lot of needs in the county. So we would appreciate any consideration that you could give to our requests this evening. It will all go to our business community, and those people are your neighbors and people who live here. We're not talking about franchise businesses. So thank you again for your consideration. I'm also available for questions if you have any about the implementation of that program.
I did have a question. When I was looking through some of the other programs counties have set out as a result of the presentation that you prepared, some of the other counties have purposefully earmarked a portion of the monies for nonprofits and educational purposes. Have you set aside a portion of that in the funds that you've received, or is it just open to anyone?
Right, very good question. We're looking at a lot of options. We're still working through the CIC. But what we came upon, sort of as a decision, was instead of dividing it into two buckets, not really knowing who was going to apply and how much would be properly allocated, we decided that we would perhaps take a weighted approach so that we would look at certain business types and give them a little bit different weight in the process. And the process isn't, the awards aren't decided by us, they're just graded and weighted by CIC, and then they would give us a list. That's one approach. I mean, we're certainly open to other ideas if anyone has one. But I did look at six different counties of their programs, and I think it's sort of a mixed bag on whether they've decided to do either the weighted approach or the bucket approach, and we're not opposed to either, to be quite honest with you.
Thank you. I mean, I'm sure that you know, from reviewing the spreadsheet, we're challenged to figure out how to meet some of the needs of some of our private schools and of course the RAPCE education program, if we should want to portion out toward that. I personally want to have it specifically for nonprofit and educational purposes, and have it in a separate bucket. It would be my preference.
Okay, we're amicable to that.
I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels about it, or if anybody's thought about it.
Okay. Well, I'm here if you have more questions or concerns, but we're definitely good at that.
We could. We could put the presentation on the screen for Row 12.
And did you want to walk through it, Teresa?
If you have questions, I'm happy to, but I don't want to spend a bunch of time going over it, are you?
I think, I mean, I think we have some time.
Okay. I can work on the fly.
I think it was pretty great, too, so.
So, all right, I'll start here. So as you all know, there was a bucket of money allotted to businesses. We have divided it out between a marketing program, which there were some concerns about that. I'll just briefly address it.
I'm sorry, could you adjust the mic? I think people may be having a hard time hearing you.
I think Luke is messing with the back there in the corner, so.
I'm not.
He can get it back there. Don't worry about that.
All right. Better? How about now? I can shout if I have to. I can never. Can I help? I'm happy to do it this way. Can you hear me?
No.
I can hear you, but I think people in the back can't.
No?
No?
Give me some sound. Does anyone have adjustments?
It's on.
Can I get adjusted higher? I don't want to break it. I'll lean over. Thanks, Teresa. Sure. So, anyway, we divided the money up into a couple of different buckets, one being for social media campaign, which will start off this year but will be geared to the spring tourism season. That will benefit businesses indirectly, but also directly, in a lot of different genres, if you will. So it is really hard to, you know, run talk, but I'm going to try to do it. So what you're seeing on the screen now is the nonprofit. Hold on, Gary. Okay, there we go. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now I can focus. The group that is called Beauty Investment Collaborative, CIC, they are the nonprofit that we selected to work with to administer the grant program. What this does is it takes all of the responsibility off of businesses at Rappahannock, and even the county for that matter, of collecting people's information, their financial information, or any data that they have to submit. It's just not secure to try and submit this information through regular emails. So this will be a portal. They'll be able to sign up ahead of time before the campaign actually kicks off. They'll receive an email that'll tell them all the documents that they need in place before they actually fill out the application, and it's pretty simple. You know, it's comparing one spreadsheet from last year to this year to show at least a 25% decrease in their profit due to COVID. So CIC has done this with eight-plus counties in Virginia. All of it's been done with CARES Act money, so they are very well-versed in how to handle this program and how to meet all the state requirements, federal requirements. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. So this one is just a quick overview of some of our neighboring counties. I just put it in there for informational purposes. It's kind of, it's a little deceiving because we're not really comparing apples to apples. Rappahannock County is a much smaller county than even Madison, which is our neighboring county as far as number of businesses go. We are smaller, I wouldn't say significantly smaller. I did a quick study on their Chamber of Commerce website tonight before I headed over here, and I'm guessing they have somewhere in the neighborhood of about 200, 250 members on that website. So I'd say that it's fairly compatible with the size of our community, business-wise, membership-wise. Anyway, you can see Colpepper, Moore, and Page, they all had significant amounts of money that they've used for this exact same program, and in fact, many of these have been administered by CIC. Page County did not choose to use a provider to administer the program, and they regret it at this point. I spoke with them yesterday, and they're very sorry that they didn't. It's a lot more work than they anticipated. Next slide, please. This is a very general overview of the program criteria. Of course, it gets a little bit more detailed once you get into the application process, but this is the general overview. And as you can see, for a business to be, and that's a for-profit or a nonprofit business to be eligible, they must demonstrate a loss of revenue of at least 25%, and that would be since March of 2019. Also, expenses that are related to COVID are, would qualify them under this grant program. So that's e-commerce, the type of setting up new guidelines for their business to meet COVID restrictions or guidelines that apply to how they do business. Awardees, as I said, can either be a for-profit or a 501(c)(3) corporation. We limited it to a 501(c)(3) because if you've ever looked at the IRS list, there's probably, I don't know, 30, 50 different nonprofit status, and it covers a lot of ground. It really doesn't apply to us. Awardees, they must be an established business, have one or more locations in Rappahannock County, including their principal place of business, have less than 50 full-time employees across all locations, have been in operation for one year, and be current on their taxes. Again, I have to tell you that we did not reinvent the wheel on this program. We went out and looked at, this one is from- We went out and looked at, this one is from Madison County, pretty much verbatim. They took theirs pretty much verbatim from Culpeper County. It's been sort of this. We all are trying to learn as we go along, let's not reinvent the wheel. I have heard a couple of things that will be helpful to us. Other counties have made mistakes, and they were eager to share those so that we didn't make the same. And then last but not least, we have the amount, award amount. And these are up to, and I will tell you that since we are asking for more money, what Madison County is doing is that they have a bucket of $150,000. And they have decided that if everyone who applies qualifies and actually fits into the parameters of how they want to award money, then what they'll do if they don't have enough funds in their bucket is they'll decrease everybody's request by 75% or 25% and give them 75% of what they requested. So that way, it's a fair, it's a fair way of cutting back to accommodate the amount of money that you have. Anyway, and it just goes on to say that applicants must, you know, complete an online application, certify that their answers are true and correct, provide completed W-9 because these documents are taxable. If they truly have a loss from the past year, then that's not a concern. But if it's, that's between them and their accountant, but they should not have to worry about taxes. So that's it. And the last one here is our timeline. We plan to kick off an ad campaign in the Rappahannock News announcing that the program will be opening up. The grant program actually opens on October the 5th, so there'll be two weeks of an ad just telling folks that you can go to this website. We'll have a website in that ad where they can log on, and they can go ahead and put their name in. They'll get in the queue. They'll be notified as soon as the grant program actually opens up. But what they'll be able to do is see a list of the documents and start gathering everything so that they'll be ready to go on October 5th. The grant program will run the 5th through the 19th of October. We will continue to run ads to encourage people and remind them to complete an application. Then the program will close on the 19th, and we are shooting for a date of November 2nd to announce the awardees. What is left out of that process is that once we get the list from CIC of everyone who meets the criteria and qualifies for a grant, then what we will have to do is have to have a committee here in Rappahannock County that just goes over and looks at it and makes sure that we're good with everything. And then we will ask for the checks to be written. And CIC can actually write the checks for us and send those out and collect it every night if we are so inclined. Otherwise, we can write the checks ourselves.
Yeah, I think this will have to go through the Regional Commission.
Okay. Yeah. So they, just so that, you know, they have been writing the checks for Culpeper and with on them as well, so. However, you want to, we all, so I'll buy by whatever you say. And I think that's it. Is that the last slide, Gary? Yep, that's it.
Madam Chair, any questions or comment?
Yes, Mr. President.
I don't like this thing. Just thought I'd put that out there. I don't like these.
Oh, I thought you talked about the microphone. You scared me for a minute.
Looking at the numbers, you know, when you start out with a maximum of $60,000 in the program and the award amounts, you could award $60,000 to as few as three to six companies, depending on who applies and how much they apply for award.
We could. That's, that is a possibility. It would depend. I mean, you have to look at the numbers there. I mean, if a company asks us for $3,000 to, and they're going to have to justify that $3,000 by a documented loss. If they ask us for $3,000, we're only going to give the $3,000. And I think most of our businesses are going to fall into that first category, the $10,000 category, just for the number of full-time employees they have. Most of our businesses are truly small businesses with just, you know, a handful of employees. So it is possible, but if we run into that problem and realize, well, we have $60,000 and we had an ask of $90,000, we'd cut everybody by a fair, equitable percentage. Unless, of course, we get more money and then.
And how would you be objective?
It's, it's all done by a computer program and by a third party. Is that what you're asking me about the objective award?
Yeah, I guess so. I'm just wondering about, well, I'll be frank. People have complained to me that they're afraid that businesses of Rappahannock members may get the money. How would you, how would you be objective?
Well, so I'll address that in two ways. The first program that we did, the $108,000 that we distributed, went to businesses all across this county, not.
Right, but as private funds, I'm not concerned about the private funds. I'm concerned about the $60,000.
Oh, well, my point, I'm sorry, Rich, my point was just to think about who won. We didn't only give it to our membership, and that's not the intention of this. And we have given our award to the board supervisors of how we're going to handle this project. And businesses in Rappahannock is not making the decision. We have set qualifications and criteria that a business must meet, but CIC will make all those decisions, and it's done electronically when you get down to it. Because as each applicant fills out, this is my, you know, my business financial statement, and they upload that document, CIC looks at that, they check that off the list, and then they get a certain percentage weight that they've completed the application. And that's 10% of the application. So that's not, we don't make the decision. All we would do is have a committee of three people from the community that are not business owners in the community or members of businesses in Rappahannock. They would look at the final list and give you approval. But the list would already be determined by CIC.
Okay. Thank you.
You have a question, Mr. Whitson?
Yeah, I'm not sure what our format is. Should we just be asking as people are presenting? Because I have already missed a few.
Well, you know, it's always awkward to try and figure out the best way forward with this, but, you know, I think last time when we didn't ask questions on the front end, people were sitting and then popping back up to answer questions. So I think if we can just knock it all out in one go. Of course, there will be follow-up, I'm sure, but we'll try to make a better process.
Just want to follow the rules. My question is, relates to the amount. First of all, thank you for all you're doing. You do a lot for businesses in the county, and it's much appreciated. And you're taking this, I'm, it seems, as sort of a mechanism for dispersing money out to the community, which is great. And when I look at, when I look at everyone in our community in need, I see distinct categories of interested parties. One would be obviously our businesses. Second, fire and rescue, schools, nonprofit organizations. So just thinking about this $1.2 million that we've been granted, at least in my mind, before diving into the weeds, I want to make sure that there's equity and fairness. And to this end, with the small business grants, I note that throughout your presentation, you're referencing $60,000. My recollection from our first CARES Act disbursement meeting was that we had approved $125,000. And I, just speaking for myself, I remember emphasizing that I hoped the vast majority of that money would go directly into small business grants. And I said that at the time. So I'm a little surprised $60,000 is the grant amount because that suggests there's $65,000 that's been set aside for, I don't know if it's the marketing campaign. So first question, has any money been spent on marketing to date?
No, we have not been mentioned.
Okay.
We signed a contract, but we've not been mentioned.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I just feel like as this pandemic grinds on, at least from where I sit, and just thinking about our community, the money that's going out to you is a lump sum. Again, and I'll let other board members speak for themselves. But I feel like it's best and best serves the interests of our business community if that money is available to them as direct grant money. I haven't heard from a single business owner say to me that, boy, you know, we really, we need a marketing campaign. What I do here is, we're hurting, we need money. If it's available, any little bit helps. And so this, again, is my perspective. Whatever money you have and whatever additional money you might receive in the second round of allocations, I would just hope that it all goes in the form of small business grants and that any discussion of a campaign reopening Rappahannock County, et cetera, would be a help to some later day when such, when such a campaign makes sense, given that we're still in the throes of this pandemic. So just my two cents.
Sure, and I appreciate that. So I'd like to address a few more.
Sure.
A couple of things. When you were giving, when you made our first bids, we asked for $100,000.
Right.
$100,000 for the marketing campaign, $100,000 for the grant program. We knew at the time that the marketing campaign would not take $100,000, but we knew that it was going to take somewhere in the neighborhood of $70,000 to $85,000. And that's why we asked for $100,000, with the hope that that other $25,000 would go over into the grant program. So it didn't happen. We kind of split the baby that night because there were a lot of requests. And that was before we had received the second round of CARES funding. So we, I hear what you're saying, maybe the people that you've spoken to, but I can also tell you that I've spoken to every single member of business in Rappahannock and other members or other businesses that aren't members. And there is, there is a need and a want for this community to be recognized and to give more bodies here. Our businesses cannot make money based on our local support. They can survive, maybe, but they will never thrive. There just are not enough people here. And we have a golden opportunity to bring more people here. People are dying to get out of the cities. They're dying to go out to green spaces and be separated from other people. And we want to do this carefully and with everyone's help first and foremost. But the businesses can't make it just on people who live in this county. We have to bring, we have to bring others here. So to say that marketing is not important, I, you know, you know people in the travel industry, both of us know people in the travel industry, and we know how important marketing is. That's what those people who go and visit those locations and travelings do. They spread through social media the word of that location, and that brings more distribution, more dollars to that location. So to your point, though, the money that we have asked for this evening, and I put this in my letter, was that it would be strictly for the grant program. And I'm only asking for a commitment from the board for additional funds. I'm not entirely sure that those funds are going to be dispersed, to be quite honest with you. I hear people say to me, some of the larger businesses in the county say, we have PPP, we had EIDL, we've had some grant money, we got a loan, we've done this. We're doing good right now. So I think it's the smaller businesses that are still in need of some assistance, not the, not the inn, maybe some of the bigger or the larger restaurants are not in that position right now. So I'm not even sure that we would give $100,000 or $150,000 in grants, but I'd like to know exactly what we're working with so we can work within those parameters. And if the money is not utilized by businesses, if they don't need it, I mean, they're going to have to provide detailed documentation for their need. So if they cannot provide that, they're not going to apply, and they're not going to make it through the application process. So our first round of grants that we gave out from $5,000 was Goodwill. I mean, that was straight up Goodwill. We wrote $1,000 checks all day long. But this one's a little bit more difficult, and you have to demonstrate you have at least a 25% loss of revenue from last year. So if you lose your way clear to give us additional funds, we will certainly slot those just for, just for grants.
And I don't want to suggest that I don't see tourism promotion as important. It obviously helps the county's bottom line. I just, for me, it's a matter of privatization. And what I sense and what I've heard from people is that especially small bus, really small businesses, of which we have many, you know, a few thousand dollars here and there would make a difference. And I don't want to, I just, I just feel like a, a marketing campaign looking somewhere out in the future is not taking care of those people. And $65,000 is a lot of money that's, would, under your current allocation of the funds already provided, would basically put those funds off limits to those business owners. So I'm just concerned about that. I just think direct relief is, should be the priority right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. I have a couple of questions, too. I did a little research this afternoon based on this list. Culpeper County received 9.2 million in CARES Act funding total, of which this says 3.3 million's gone to CARES Act grant programs for small businesses. But I do want to note a substantial portion of that came from the town of Culpeper, which has no fire and rescue or schools or any sort of other needs to meet. They went all in on small business. And, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're just not in that position, Teresa, and I think you know that. So that's a, that's a large reason why you see such a disproportion there in Culpeper. Warren County is similar with Front Royal as to how they've weighted, you know, their dispersments as well. Page County received 4 million, so 500,000 they're into an eighth, which we're at a tenth with 125. Staunton was 4.25 million, and they're in at 500,000, so they're also at about an eighth. And then Madison County, which really is, is, is in a lot of ways seems comparable to Rappahannock, they actually received twice as much CARES Act money as we did. They received 2.3 million, and they've allocated 150,000. So, I mean, I, I just wanted to clarify things, you know, some of the apples-to-apples differences here, just because I kind of have to stick up for what my board did. And I also wanted to ask, as a result of that research, you know, there, there is so many, it's, it's not a lot clearly like Culpeper or Front Royal received, but we did disperse some funds to the town of Washington. And have you requested any CARES Act money from the town of Washington? Because they received over $16,000, and they really don't have very many COVID-related expenses.
So, no, we have not. And I didn't understand that they actually received money. I thought that was, I thought they had to request one year's $100,000.
The way that it's written up, they automatically receive a proportionate amount of the CARES Act funding, just like any other town in any other locality.
The town has been told that the money would be dispersed on a reimbursement basis if they provide eligible expenses. So of course, this would be an eligible expense if they want to allocate some of those funds.
I have no problem asking.
I mean, I'm just thinking logically, you know, if, if there, if there's a way to do that, if they're getting the money and they want to give you that money, that's up to them. So there's that as well.
And that's fine. And I'd like to just go back to the slide one second. It was there, my intention to deceive the board with that slide. I just wanted to show you what other communities are investing in their businesses and not by, not as a way of shaming or saying we're only investing $60,000 and therefore investing 3.3 million, but more as an example of how important business is. I mean, and I, I just think businesses are important. I think especially in our small community. These are our neighbors. I mean, people buying their own businesses here. You know, they're not, it's not a, it's not a franchise business. It's not a stranger coming in. It's our neighbors and our friends. So again, I wasn't intending to deceive you, though.
I understand. I just hope you understand from our position, there is an equity issue that Mr. Whitson brought up. And certainly, when you get to diving into the numbers, Warren County has dispersed $700,000 to fire and rescue, and ours haven't gotten to that yet. So I, I hope you understand that we are in a very difficult position when we look to crunch these final numbers.
I do understand that, and we're so.
Thank you. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Johnson?
I just have one question about CIC. Are they charging any type of fee to do the survey?
They will charge a fee. It'll ultimately depend upon how much money we distribute. So that's not determined until we give them the amount of money that we're given. Great.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Sure. Be back. Anything else?
I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything? Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Schumaker?
Rich, you make the cast, Hendrick. President P. Mike Robbin, of course, you all know that. We just found out about this money a little bit of time ago, and so we've put together something for you to consider. I don't know that we need to go through all the slides with a lot of detail, but next slide, please. This is kind of who we are. We started in 2000. We started in 2008 with about 30 customers. We're now at 450, over 540 customers, 400 of those in Rapid Handic County. Our revenues went from $50,000 in 2008 to over 600,000 now. I have personally invested over $400,000 in infrastructure in this business here of Rapid Handic County. Um, because most of the stuff is in Rapid Handic, even though we penetrate Madison, the Falkirian. Next slide, please. Uh, yeah, okay, you see, I'm there. I want to show you my team. Stand up, please. This is a really solid team of us. Thank y'all very much. Uh, Richard Page is our network engineer. He's based out in North Carolina, but he's on call anytime in the evening. Jess, you've talked to him many, many times, you know, she's in the office. We've got Evelyn and Daniel over there that are installers and tree climbers. And Chase is also an installer, tree climber. My son Matt is our onsite, uh, network guy. So we've got a really good team of guys. They all work together well. There's not one job that these guys can't do. And what I would say, my son Matt will climb a tree. We try to get change on the guest, but, so, um, next slide, please. Uh, we offer unlimited service, a lot of companies, uh, leverage your data and all that kind of stuff. We have our prices there. Um, next slide, please. Um, we're using right now 2.4 and 5.8 frequencies plus 11 gigahertz connections. One of the things that we intend to do is bring more 11 gigahertz connections. We've already been approved. Two locations here in Rapid Handic County, we will double the amount of bandwidth we have, which will make a significant improvement in our, in our broadband system. It allows to pull more people on. Um, obviously, we have problems with mountains and hills and trees. We have a program for that. Next slide, please. These are the existing sites that we have right now in Rapid Handic County. The ones are darker, the ones that are in Rapid Handic County itself. And we've got a big presence there. We've got some in Falkirian, we see Evelyn. And one of the others is shining back in Rapid Handic County, part of the Marshall, uh, hilltop. We're shining in to Rapid Handic County as well. Next slide, please. This is kind of our hilltop points. I remember the antastates, one for the TNC, but the combination idea was coming on. Next slide, please. This is our pressure cover room that we have, and it looks pretty good. Unfortunately, what happens is you hit down a hole, they can't get you with 2.4 and 5.8, or shoot to do retreats. Or they're, next slide, please. Um, what we want to do is we're installing in the next probably 30 days, a tower in Rixieville. It's probably a 40 footer, it's probably a three to four foot base tower, concrete foundation. Um, what we want to do is camouflage towers, mainly put camouflage stuff on. We don't want to see, we don't want anybody else to see. Uh, you're probably going to see some, but I don't think you're going to see much. You might have to look for it. I mean, if you look now on the mountaintop, you can't see our stuff now. And that's exactly what we're going to try to do with, with our improvement. Uh, we're going to use solar backup, power, battery backup, and in a couple of cases, we're going to get some, um, in-house generators, but those are, because it'd be cheaper to do that than it would be to put up solar and the other stuff. We're going to increase, we've done C, for example, we do have now another internet connection. Other than Rixieville, that's a Spiritville tower that I've been in place, probably about a week, I think. We keep one in the warm world, but you got to do it. And so we're just about through all of that. And, uh, so next slide, please. Uh, Spiritville Tower is going to be operational by the end of next week. We feel pretty certain. Rouse Lake Mountain, which is in Falkir County, but it shines over a lot of, uh, of Rapid Handic County. Uh, and it's sort of lined over monthly pretty nicely. Red Oak Mountain, we have agreements, uh, at Rouse Lake and Red Oak. We're working on that. And we're reasonably close to getting that resolved. Castle Mountain, we're working on that one as well. Oze Mountain, we've got a agreement on that. Jenkins Mountain, we're already there. We're just going to expand it to smaller mountain. My understanding is we're good to go there. Chest of Gap, uh, where the, uh, fire station is, I think we're good to go there. And when we do all of this, it's going to up sort of Old Hollow, Turkey Mountain, places like that. We're going to get up those areas. Next slide, please. This is new tracks and points, which are in the, kind of purple colors. And, uh, people seem to love here there. Next slide. And this is the new covers that we want to get from the new towers. And put the next slide together, and you can see that we're covering pretty significantly. There's a lot of hot spots there. So what we're asking to do is, we're not getting white spots this time. What we're doing is, uh, improving the infrastructure and expanding the ability for us to do some, uh, different kinds of, of radios and things like that, that we can penetrate trees better. Next slide, please. Uh, that's what we're talking about. We're expanding the broadband service in Rapid Handic County. In order to do that, even though we've been using trees for years, and we started out with this guy that started putting trees, it sounds really good, and we just spent a lot of money grounding them. You cannot ground them very well. But these towers are grounded, they use them in whisps. On this one, we are a lot of wire sending and service provider. They use them all over the country. So we feel like the reliability is going to be way better. And, uh, what happens with that is now we can move more expensive equipment on top of the towers instead of a 400 to 500 dollar end house with three of, ribbon put in between 4,500 and 5,000 dollar units. And we can't have them go out every time.
Oh, no.
We can't afford to replace them. So that's why we're doing more of that. Next slide, please. we are going to have more people on staff. Jess is working out, planning for us to have somebody in the office, manning from 3 o'clock in the morning to 8 o'clock in the afternoon, and Terrence and Sonson getting safe. And we probably want to expand that. We're going to need additional service and insulation technicians, uh, increasing our engineer services. Richard Page's service, uh, expanding if we need to. And we're going to have a dedicated tower construction team. We can't take these guys off of what they're doing, the towers they made during downlink. But we're getting several hundred thousand to that. The way ahead is, and this is what this may come, and she needs money for advertising and stuff. I always suggest using one of our plans we could do is increase the broadband availability. We'll automatically get care of the businesses that are here. We'll encourage other businesses to come here. Um, I have real estate people calling me every day. We can get internet to a certain house. We can, they can sell it, but we can't, they can't. I would say that broadband is probably a high priority you can make. I know that broadband community's been working for, what, three, four years now, I believe. And they're getting closer to business solutions, something like that. A business opportunity to make dramatic, period of dramatic improvement in broadband availability and build a foundation which we can stand on down the road. Okay?
Right.
Uh, we plan to, um, make available, which I think is important, I believe it is anyway, uh, safety on broadband towers, uh, public safety and stuff. Where do they need footwork, we're going to provide an internet access and power. So, next slide. Do you have any more? No. We got a spreadsheet, you have that here. Here's a spreadsheet for tomorrow. There it is. I don't see it very well. That's over there. No, that's wrong spreadsheet. I don't know if I looked at it. You have it? There it is. I wish I could see that. I know what it is. All right, here's what we're asking for money. The, the top section is what we're asking for, and I think, I can't see the number very well. I think it's like $20,000 to $40,000 that we spent on this Spiritville tower. Plus what we're doing with Rixieville, it's going to cost about another $20,000. So that's $70,000 we're putting in regardless of what y'all think. And then we're looking at, uh, Chest of Gap Tower potentially. Uh, we're not quite sure what that's going to cost. Don't know how big that tower's going to be. It could be a 20 footer, 40 footer, or 60 footer. Uh, we've got it planned here for 40 after 40 probably in the fourth division. And we can do less than do that. Um, the Battle Mountain is a key location for us. It's a retransmit off back to other locations. We're looking at, uh, two towers there. And what we want to do, and the reason we're asking for this expansion money, because it is expansion, because we can't get any more people, too much more frequencies we're using. Uh, SES, uh, internet down in Nelson County, they're going to be, except the only difference is they use an LTE. We're asking for money to help put the towers in. We're not paying for the 2.4 and 5.8 rates. We've got those in place. We just want to improve the model. Okay? But the LTE is critical, but, uh, so what we can do with LTE, and that we can serve anywhere from 40 to 50 people on each end town with the four of them up on that, for example. We're looking at, you know, close to 200 people. If we can serve, we might not get that many people, but we have the potential. And what happens with these antennas, they've got, uh, a system inside them, especially, I don't want to say it, uh, they've been designed so that you can put a lot of people so that we can go 25 down, three up in these radius. We can do it with what we have now, except we can't put too much people on. So, and as we get bigger and bigger, then we can afford to put bigger, better equipment. So we can do the 25 three. Okay? Uh, here in Mountain, uh, we're going to drop three towers up there and probably two of them have, uh, two antennas. Well, we'll have six different antennas up here. And hopefully, there'll be at least three or four LTEs. It'll be 90 degrees sector antennas, which should be able to cover that area pretty well. Uh, the next one would be Red Oak, and we're not sure about that one yet. We should know by November whether you're going to do that. I feel pretty positive they're going to do it. Mr. Johnson just doesn't want to see the towers, and I said, "I promise you, you won't see them." And we'll find a way to see them. Scrabble's Eagles Nest, we've got approval there. Oze Mountain, which will serve, uh, Rapid Handic Lakes, we're approval there. And, uh, so what this means for the county is, we do all, even if we don't do Red, everything in the county's going to be better. We're going to be able to get up into Flinley area better. We're going to be able to get down in the Valley way better. We're going to be able to get up here, follow those areas better. We'll be able to get down, uh, Utown, all those areas. Everyone who was, uh, having improvement in their area compared to here now. So, um, this next phase will be, uh, let's scroll up and see. We've got, uh, some things, we'll probably do some of these on our own. Uh, Rouse Lake Mountain, we'll probably do that one on, because we see it as a really great spot. Uh, Harris Hollow, we're still not quite sure about that one yet, but there's some stuff armed in the area. It's on the other side of the Zabel, there's a bunch of houses over there. Keep an eye on the name of that road, but.
So it's, it's got my view, I believe.
Yeah. So, uh, that's that. Jenkins Mountain, we want to go on the other side of Jenkins Mountain, point out, get around Hollow. Uh, Judge Albrecht, I think his name is, he's given us permission to relay off to his partner and shoot for that whole hollow. We just have to get there. But if we don't have the foundation to start yet, there's no sense in going out there and doing that. So that's what we're doing, we're doing. So this is not a restructuring of our existence, uh, this is the ability to expand our network. So smaller mountains are another possibility. We have another site on Battle Mountain we're looking at. And Woodville Jubilee, uh, Jubilee Mountain area we're definitely looking at. So, uh, we are trying to find a place up on Woodward Road, way up there high. Uh, Todd, Todd's having problems up there, and he needs help. And there's some spots up there we could probably relay off of. The LTE is not a all-to-be-all. You can go through trees much better than you can with 2.4. And 2.4 will be way better than 5.8. And if you have any questions about the technical side, Rich can answer this for you. But it's not going to go through a half a mile of trees like that. That's why we want to be a person to go like that. Okay? So I think if you look at the number we're asking for, 300 and, what, 35,000 or some kind of thing, you will have a tremendous impact on the improvement of broadband in Rapid Handic County. And just so that you know, you haven't invested as much value. So I'm, I'm committed to doing this.
Questions from the board?
I, I kind of wanted to go last.
Do any board members have any questions for Mr. Shoemaker?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I said, do any board members have any questions for Mr. Shoemaker?
I do, ma'am, too.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Donahue.
Um, wondering where you got the additional customers numbered?
Where are you talking about?
On your spreadsheet where it says how many additional customers you think you'll talk to?
That is the potential customers that we can get. In other words, if you look at our 540, and some of that 540s in other counties, but we're looking at, uh, we're looking at potential customers that we can serve in Rapid Handic County. Right now, on our hilltops at Battle Mountain, uh, I would say we're serving maybe 25%. Would you guys agree with that? 25% off of Battle Mountain that we can get? Maybe a third. Okay, so with the LTE, we're increasing that to 60 to 70%.
I was just trying to figure out how you got the number of customers total. Did you go house to house and count people?
No, I mean, uh, I know this sounds kind of weird, but in Winter Town, there's no leaves. You can look down and see all these houses. Okay? And we know which ones we have. We see a whole lot more that we don't have, but you can't see them in the summertime because of leaves. Uh, you can drive down Few Town Road, uh, and Rock Mills Road, Angels Roads. And I know which ones we have. And I'll go by one we have, and there's three of them. So I feel pretty comfortable that we're going to expand. The point is that the equipment we're putting up can handle the increase load. So potentially, even if there's not enough people there, people to move in there or for them to have higher speeds in that spot is there to cut that. Does that make sense?
And the tower height is selected by, is it just based on what mountain you're on as to how high the tower has to be, or?
We want to put the tower up so that if you're down here, our tower's up here, you can't see it. We'll down later. And if you do, it's just open up both that. And then the trees behind it, if this is the tower, we want the trees behind it up here. We want, you can't see it through the bottom. That's the idea. So tower height is dependent on the grade of the hill. The steeper the grade, the shorter the tower. The less the grade, the higher the tower. The goal is, we've got potential for some 80s that we want to do. We don't want to use them. And we think 60s will be enough. We can prune the tops of some trees so that you can't see, but still get over the hills if we can get down. So, I mean, if we could go up to 20 foot towers a day, how's that going all day long?
Sure.
I mean, we could, we could do a lot of that, but that's not going to happen. So, I mean, we're on some trees now, and our antennas come on Chase, which is 8 feet. Okay? I'm here. So, uh, we think with the modest amount of pruning objects, we're on a main board, all sorts. So I love trees, I love things that were open. So we want to make sure we protect everything. The problem is, we don't have trees. We've got antennas on trees, and we blow up trees a lot of times, the trees are, uh, now we have to find another tree. Unfortunately, there will not be one, so we have to go do something else. So we're actually out in the, uh, trees, pruning things down, so we have a lot of site, which is going to be real. This is a more permanent location, we set it in the ground. Uh, and it's there, it's not going anywhere. It's easy to take down, and we're going to have to, a problem. Give you an idea of going up Battle Mountain, how we're going to have to do that. We've got to take 455 80 pound bags of concrete up the hill. Makes it by hand at work. That's not going to be a simple job. So, but that's kind of stuff we're going to have to do. Some places will be decent, but other places will be very difficult.
And then the one thing in the presentation that I read, and I don't see it here, is the speed you were expecting was three up, three down?
Uh, right now, we're doing, we have a three down and one and a half up. That's our basic package. And then goes up from there. We've got people doing 20 down, 10 up. Um, the way our equipment is and the number of people on it is, if you can imagine pumping water, if you've got 100 gallons of water going through. if you've got a hundred gallons of water going through, and you've got a hundred people taking a shower, there's not going to be a whole lot of water in the shower, but if five people are going to do that, plenty of water. So that's kind of the same theory. So what we want to do is increase the different kinds of frequencies we can use so we can spread it out a little bit more. We want to use the eleven gigahertz to get more internet into the hilltops. The radios that we're using right now are capable of using one hundred and fifty megabytes through, maybe as much as two hundred. A couple of years ago, it was half that. So the technology's changing, all we have to do is change the radio. One hundred and fifty dollar unit, you can automatically put the internet through. The problem is, we've got to make a big pipe out there to get into this spot. And that's one of the things we want to do. So more we get in, so all the units we have out here, now we're making them bigger. We're going to take them and take them to the next spot. So we're just making our pipes bigger.
The reason I ask is, the broadband committee before I was put on it has a mission statement of ninety-five percent coverage and twenty-five up, three down.
Well, I understand that, okay? And I think, you remember, was it a guy from Alcorn's Road there? Remember, he said, he said physics and something else about...
Conscience.
I think that's a wonderful goal. And if somebody could do that at reasonable cost, it would be done by now. It's not going to happen anytime soon. I think we've approached that. Now, if we're looking for grants, radios that we want to put up in this expansion can handle that. And as of right now, there's, the LTE has a hundred and fifty megahertz frequency. They had an auction, and the auction, some other companies bought seventeen megahertz frequencies. It was seven, ten megahertz, and we have eighty open megahertz frequencies, which is plenty, all we need. And we could use theirs if they're not using it. And if it's not in an area where it's a problem, we can use it whether it's at the other end of the ham. There, you're only going to watch three, five, six miles. So we have plenty of frequencies available to do this. And radios get better, we're going to use them up for better use.
And then I know there's some zoning issues on the towers. And I don't know, Mr. Curry, if you can help me on that one? Wooden versus metal?
The zoning ordinance currently has an exemption for timber poles that are less than eighty feet if it's on property served by the service and then can serve its neighbors. And we've had this conversation in the past, and it's hard to lug an eighty-foot timber pole on. Plus, because it's got to be in the ground, up to the top of the mountain. Red Oak or something like that, it's got a road, might be doable. But I know that Piedmont Broadband has been interested in segmented Roman towers that can come up in sections, you just bolt them together and, you know, carry all your bags of concrete. But the zoning ordinance would require that to have a zoning permit. And through the same process that we went through with First Barry Bowl and Four Scrabble, and that is problematic. The other option would be to amend the ordinance so that towers other than wooden towers would be also exempted, you know, if they're short. But that too takes time. And there, the board really doesn't have many avenues to work around the established ordinance without public hearings. You could, suppose pass an emergency ordinance with the intent of catching up to it with a public hearing later, presupposing that the citizens wouldn't support it. But I believe that that's legislative.
Let me just throw this out. Whoever does broadband, I will tell you, how do you think you're going to get broadband to people in the county that don't have a tower? Is this going to happen? The bigger the company, the bigger the towers. You've got somebody, three out of the six people here live in Rattan County. If you go, let this cross the line and call that. Trying to get Richard May to live here, but it's not quite ready yet. He's in over here lying. So none of us want to see towers, none of us. But if you're going to have to put some kind of grounded device in it, and a wooden pole is not going to do it, not going to happen. You're going to have to do something better than that. So if you want broadband in Rattan County, whoever does it, they're going to be good with towers. You need to decide what kind of towers they're going to build. Spiritville Tower, half a dozen of them around the county? Or maybe some that you don't see, that will just, and maybe more of which you can see. But you're going to have to build sooner or later. We can't avoid not putting enough of towers. Not going to happen.
I think probably the idea of the wooden tower initially was that it would be blending and natural, almost like the power lines are. I guess that begs the question, when you install these towers, what will they look like?
You're going to be like a lattice tower. There are probably three or four meters base, and you're probably, you know, maybe this wide in the top, about like that. That's it. They have, we have a picture of one down at Castle and Farms, right?
Yeah, yeah, actually, Castle and Farms has, had two of them on site. That's actually where we got the idea for it. It's about a thirty-foot row tower over by their site, they call it stretch house. And they originally used it for television antenna to get analog to television signal. We ended up using, because it wasn't being used for that. We used it just for a connection, to get that, that site, connection. But it should sit there, it's thirty foot tall, and, you know, a couple hundred yards to be able to see it, even if it's being unpainted. So we thought, well, shoot, if you can do that, it's like, well, what do we take on those? We can camouflage them at a half a mile to a mile to the back top of trees and dirt. More than likely, it'd be almost impossible to see it at that point.
So the idea is to camouflage paint glass towers?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't want to see them.
I just wanted some clarification about that.
You know, the Spiritville Tower, which is really neat about that, that paint, really, if you didn't know it was there, you probably wouldn't be able to see it unless you're looking right at it. So I think that's good color paint. We want to use several different colors of paint so that you don't have the same color going up, it breaks it up a little bit. It's to do oil paints, and I kind of liked all the things that you could do. And you could, and in landscaping, you could take trees and other things and you plant them in such a way that you can't see things. I mean, they're there, but you can disguise them. So we're going to use, like Richard May was talking about, like camouflage netting we can use. We can use reflective tape, I think. Reflective tape, you put it on the antenna, it reflects whatever it sees. Okay? So we're going to try to do all of those things to make sure that we keep our profiles absolutely as low as possible.
Thank you. I guess the other question I had was, in terms of installation, you know, we're talking about getting this into the homes of working families, seniors. I'm in a budgeting class now, learning the ins and outs of county budgeting. And the conversation is monopolized by broadband right now because probably every rural county seems to be struggling with this. Even some non-so rural counties that have rural portions. Western Loudoun County is really struggling with this right now in terms of the impact on distance learning, and of course, people trying to work from home and the implications of telehealth needing that aspect as well. So for people that need an installation, and maybe are out, not able to work or a senior on a fixed income, do you have a way to mitigate the impact of the installation costs, the two hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars upfront?
Well, just to tell you, I mean, I'm going to say, I'll sit down and run this directly. We work with everybody. There are neighbors. So if they can't pay the whole thing, then we'll set it up on a monthly plan to pay them. So we work with everybody. And we're very slow to burn people off. I'm late, they become a lot noxious, and they don't pay us for months. And I have to remind Jess to turn them off. And guess what happens if we turn them off? We just have to add money. So, so there's, there's that line between people that truly can't pay, which we want to help, and then those that just don't want to pay, and they're pushing for us to give them. And that's about where we have a lot of trouble.
And then I guess my other question was later in the presentation, and it was regarding the support for public safety on your towers. Is that something that you'd feel comfortable if we go to contract, you know, in the final details, if we should move forward? I hope you understand that, you know, it's just something that we would need written into the contract as well.
I understand. What I would suggest with that is, is that for public safety people, when we go to a hilltop, they can maybe help advise us as to how much height they need to really do what they have to do. So I don't want to put us up twenty feet, thirty feet, forty feet, this fancy six foot, we can do something. And it's hard to add on to the things that we did to build the right part of the road. So I would suggest that we work as a team, Richard Public Safety people, and find out what they actually need and actually build the sites. And show them what we're going to do, and when they say, hey, we're sort of here. If we can do that, we're good. And it's put your stuff on it, we've got internet, and we've got power, we've got all the things.
Would your ground leases support that? Your ground leases with the property owners that you're negotiating couldn't exclusively say broadband in that case?
Well, they would say broadband, and we knew that they would put public safety on it. They'd be, they'd broadband that in the contract. Mike Brown's attorney in Washington is going to write the contracts for us. And he's already, we've already spoken. We know exactly what we want to do, and so...
Those are all my questions. Does anyone else have any questions?
You still want to go last, right?
Well, I mean, I don't have to go last, but...
Just didn't want to go first.
Wait, I could ask a question after you want to go later. But some of, some of the things have already been touched upon, but, you know, looking at this the last day or so, not much longer than that, the... And in the last couple of days, I've been working with somebody else on something similar. So I just went back and looked at some of the history of what we've been doing here in the county. And in two thousand and seven, the board of supervisors appointed a committee, if you will, to look at broadband. And I believe it had two members of the board on it. I believe Mr. Welch was on it in two thousand and seven. And there's a report, you can find it, the broadband initiative. And we've done nothing since then, really, as a county. We've done nothing. And then again, I just happened to see a newspaper article, looking through the Rattan County News. And in two thousand and eighteen, we were talking about establishing a broadband committee. And in November of two thousand and seventeen, we had, I had your name here, a lady from the CIT Center for Innovative Technology met with our broadband committee. That was November of two thousand and seventeen. And we've done nothing since then. Since that time, I think we've built one tower in the county, and I don't think it's functional. It is up...
It's working.
It is working?
Yeah.
Our promise is on.
I stand corrected.
I mean, we're going to be on it here this next week.
But I know you're on it, but you're not functional because...
Well, we will be next week.
So, but, and we've approved another tower, a hundred and ninety-nine foot tower, and it's not even been started after, I think that was a February meeting where I was sick. So anyway, we've got, we've got a plan here. We've got, every county around us is using emergency ordinance towers to partner with some sort of broadband or, or internet provider with the CARES Act plan. So it's something I'm sure that we can do if we want to try and do something. And as far as the public hearing process, Mr. Curry's correct. We can't wait the public hearing process if, if whatever it is that we may have in mind requires a public hearing or requires a permanent process. We have to do that. But we can bifurcate the process. We can have the planning permission and the board supervisor meet very same night. We've done that once or twice here recently. We can do that again, and we can speed the process up tremendously if we want to do it. It all depends on whether we want to do it. And, and, you know, talking to me about internet speeds, you're talking really to the wrong person. But I know enough about it to know that I think the speeds of twenty-five down and three up are probably fiber-based. Is that correct?
There are wireless, wireless companies who want to get grants after proms, twenty-five down and three up.
But again, if you're doing that, not everybody's going to get that.
No, and I'll give you a perfect example. There's a company in Fallier County that's doing that, and they got grant for twenty-five down and three up. And they're not supplying twenty-five down and three up there, but...
That's what I hear.
They're just capable of doing it, but they can't, because guess what happens? They have towers two, three, four miles away, and they did that in spring, and everything's green. Guess what happened? Leaves. Think same with your cell service. And my cell service works great in the winter time. Lots of stuff, and that's different now, it's seventy-five. So yes, they can do that, and they said they can do that, but they can't do that because of the problem with the stuff.
But even in the winter time, you can't do it for everyone, right?
Well, I mean, eventually you could, but it's just going to take a lot of money. Get the right person up there, do it.
So it's not immediate?
Thank you, Martin.
It's not going to be immediate, no matter who does it?
It is, listen, I don't know what the grant was to Fallier County, it's going to have to be a hundred and fifty. And then I don't get everybody, they got three years to get ninety percent of the people. They're not going to do that.
Right.
There's little valleys and nooks and crannies that run along your county. And let me tell you what, you're not going to get it. You're going to have to go to little replay stations, all over the place, to work to get these people. And I don't get them, you talk out of three hundred, five, they stay again for a real occasion, I call them. Now, when you're starting broadband, somebody, you internet, internet. We can do things with dark internet, like streaming, voiceover, I mean, Skype, and all that kind of stuff because they're licensed. You know what latency is? Latency is really important. When you have latency, it's only ten, twenty, thirty milliseconds, you can do anything on there. The only problem with LTE is, generally, a little bit slower with air stuff, I guess. But that's okay. You know, every twenty milliseconds, maybe it's twenty or forty, or something like that. It's not that big a deal, we're not gamers for that. Gamers absolutely know that. But satellite, seven hundred and fifty milliseconds, that is death to gamers. It doesn't sound like a long time, it is. You can't Skype, you can't do those kind of things. So whatever network we put in, it must have been this low latency. So it's low latency. You can do more stuff with less bandwidth than you could be with something that's higher frequency. I'll say it that way.
Could you repeat all that again? Another thing, the amount of money. Culpeper County, I forget what they awarded for the contract value for their internet provider that they just, I think they did it at their August meeting. But they approved, their board approved a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for its survey. That's roughly half of what Bevins is asking to start providing service. I think he's actually done a pretty good bit of a survey here, so I don't know. I mean, I'm asking my colleagues, what is it we want to do? And if we don't do this or something similar to this, I mean, this is just a, this is really your first draft. I mean, this could be flexible, couldn't it?
Yeah, we're going to, we pretty much know where we want to for our towers, or whatever you want to call them.
But you can kind of move this around like checkers, didn't you?
We can move it around any way you want to. I mean, this, this is an initial draft. We think by doing our, we think is our schedule, it's going to have a big impact. And if it means that we all sit down and have a meeting and say, okay, well, why do you do this and that? Well, what if we do that? And we put numbers to it. We've got lots of numbers. It would be hard to maneuver them around and make them fit whatever program you all want to do. But I'm going to tell you something, I don't mean to hurt your feelings, but I know broadband in Rattan County better than all of you put together. And I know where we want to go to build a foundation. You don't, you don't start out, start at the beginning. We're starting in the beginning, we're going to build it out. We're going to expand the ability to put better equipment, up more expensive equipment, because that's what we've got to do. You can't put, you can use the five-eight-two-four, but it's not going to do everything we want to do. We have to use the more expensive equipment to get the penetration in the trees. So if you can't do that, and we can do it all day long in trees, because the grade goes out, well, let's go put a hundred, two hundred dollars in, that's no big deal. But you can't be putting four, five, or six thousand dollars pieces of equipment. And we're going to have expensive routers. Richard May is working on a router, the switching program, these things are chief there. We've been using switches a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, and they're fine. Except that now we're going to start using... using 1,000, $2,000, $3,000 switches, we can't have them go out in the front, these are ground. That's what the other companies are going to do, they're going to have to do the same thing. So sooner or later, you're going to get to the spot that we're asking you to do now, whereas with us and somebody else, sooner or later, you're going to have to do exactly that, because they're not going to come here, well, I've seen that nice pumper tree, well, we'll use that pumper tree if we want to do that. They're not even, they're not even going to put a radio on a tree to get a lot of light within things, they're going to mount it on ground, they can't get it on the ground on a guy's house, they're not going to put it in, period, that's what they do.
Could I have just another minute or two?
Absolutely.
Do you remember, I did not, I'm sorry, I didn't have time to really go through my amounts of paperwork, I've got baskets of stuff, but what year it was where Virginia Broadband was asking for a half a million dollars from our board?
That was around 2008, that's when I started with Pete Monbroadband, Tom Ford was the guy that started, we had a investor, and it was a meeting, and John Carter, I think, was the guy at the time.
Okay, we were at the courthouse, but.
Yeah, we were at the courthouse, we went in there, they went in, made a big proposal, and I said, well, shoot, we're already here.
Right, as Virginia Broadband, if I could just take a minute to maybe bring everybody up to speed, see if I can remember it all, Rapaha Collector was partnering with Virginia Broadband, and there was some, quite a bit of interest in trying to bring internet into the county, and at that time, I think it was around 2008, but I'm not positive.
It was, it was the summer 2008, June, July.
Yeah, and they were asking for an initial investment, initial investment from Rapaha County of $500,000, there may be some change in it, and so Mr. Schumacher came in and said that, you know, he was a small company, and he was providing internet service, and basically if we give you a half a million dollars to this company from outside the county, it could potentially put him out of business, and he's been here ever since, and he's still providing service, and he's still trying to grow his business, and we haven't helped him. So, I don't know, I think that we've got an opportunity to actually do something this time. If I could leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Woodson?
Rich, thanks, thanks a lot to you and your team, I know almost everyone sitting down there, you've been to my house, or answered texts when I needed help with my internet, and, I mean, your service has certainly changed my family's life, my son's running Microsoft Flight Simulator, which no doubt is a big drama on.
That's why my internet.
Yeah, I'd probably take everyone. So, but no, for, for us, you, I mean, you provide a great product, so I'm just going to admit that I'm a very happy customer upfront, so it's easy for me to sit here and listen and think about the possibilities. I mentioned at the outset, just when Ms. Wood was, was making her presentation, that I had in mind sort of proportional or equitable buckets in which we would, to which we would allocate the lump sum of the $1.2 billion of CARES Act money, I think I, I missed one, and one I had here was broadband, because we all know we can't wait any longer, and I think Mr. Fraser's spoken very eloquently in this regard, we have to do it. The parenthetical I have under these CARES Act big picture allocations next to broadband is, is it allowable under the CARES Act rules? And I don't, I don't say that to scare you away, or to suggest to members of the public that we're not going to invest in broadband, it's a question of whether we can do it with this CARES Act money, I think the bottom line is, we have to invest in it, we have to find a way to, to start building infrastructure in the county, and we need to do it soon, and I'm excited to hear, hear the enthusiasm coming from my colleagues, including Mr. Fraser. So I feel like we're reaching a point where we are all feeling pressure from the general public that we can't continue to survive the way we've been surviving, and we need to do something. So the one thing I want to emphasize to you is, if we determine that under CARES Act rules, which people smarter than me understand much better, if under CARES Act rules, we can't move forward and invest in any proposal, then I certainly would be committed to finding some other way, and I think that's, that's the important message that I certainly want to say to the public, we have to do something. And the one thing that I've always appreciated about all of you is when I call, I call you, and I get a response from you all, and you are really a Rapaha County business, homegrown, built from very little, you've invested a huge amount of your own money, and you've been here for the duration, Mr. Fraser's given us a history review going back to the early 2000s, and you've been here that whole time slowly, incrementally, building up your business, and I'm really pleased to see you formalize your plan in a presentation like this one, it gives me a lot of comfort to see it all laid out in this way. My one practical question is, the entire plan looks to be about $800,000, and you're talking to us about a little over 3. Question there is, how do you bridge the gap, or how do you intend to bridge the gap?
Well, one of the things is that I'm not a politician, not like government, so not my personal feelings, but I'm going to do whatever I can to have it go, and this next year, we're going to invest over $100,000, if you take a month ago, a month ago, a year from now, we'll invest $100,000 for our own money into the broadband. And one of the things that's going to happen, if we do this thing, is we have more customers working. So when you have more customers, you have a little more revenue, we spent a pretty high percentage of our revenue on improvements, replacing radios, replacing all the radios down the straddle, those things cost us, what, 130 bucks a piece? And it takes what on average, an hour and a half, two hours for two minutes to replace a radio?
It's about 250, it's a lot of work.
Okay, so we're looking at $200, but we're upgrading the equipment, guess how much the customers pay? Zero. We're a replacement. So I would say that we need to sit down and develop a plan, so that you have to allocate some money in general funds, and you get the more CARES Act money, and wherever it comes from, let's develop a plan, and we can do it in stages. You know, the problem with a lot of people developing plans, they have this great big plan, and they never want to work it, because so big, they can't accomplish it, let's take a little tiny piece, let's make that happen, we'll take another little tiny piece and make that happen, and by the time we make all these little tiny pieces, we've got ourselves broadband, so it's many, many. So I planted a tree for a guy one time, he said, I don't plant any kind of trees unless they're great big trees, like, you know, we were planting trees, he had these aren't very great. And I told him, I said, Bill, I said, plant an inch and a half caliber tree, you told me you're not going to have enough money to plant this tree for five years, you plant an inch and a half caliber tree now, it's going to be that size in five years, and somebody is going to cost you 250 bucks instead of $2,500, which one would you want to do? So again, let's, let's do something, a little bit is better than nothing at all, just take a step forward, and don't stand around thinking about, oh, we don't do this, let's move forward, let's make it happen.
If I could, and Chair, there's something I forgot.
Yes, Mr. Frazier.
And when you're talking about the number of customers that you can serve, there is, of course, he would be the primary recipient of revenue sharing, but it was, we get, I don't know what it is, $3 a phone line, account, whether it's a cell phone or a landline, something like that, and I believe we could do something similar with internet provider, but I'm not sure, we have service, tax service districts, so we could, we could some of the expense and have recurring revenue ourselves as a county to put back into it, but you've got to start something to, to get that.
If you can have a service district, and I understand that the county has done that yet, and.
But we do that with the fire, I mean, the entire county's a service district.
The folks in Richmond were excited to think that we might do that, I would say, my biggest concern relative to CARES is time, as it, you know, between zoning and everything else, and everything would have to be done by December 30th.
But is your distribution have to be done by then?
I don't.
Don't know.
Well, you know, the risk is that somebody comes along and says, we'd like our $300,000 back.
I, I just have to say, I think this is an amazing opportunity, and it caused me to go back a lot to my notes from the class with Dr. Chandler the other day, he's pretty much the guru on planning and zoning, and really has his finger of the pulse on the distribution of this CARES Act money. And as we listen to people struggle in the course of this class with the challenge of rural broadband, he encouraged counties to be approximate in their approach, and encouraged counties that as the CARES Act continues, you know, if you're meeting needs, he firmly believes that there will be a relaxed examination of what you spent the money on, as long as you're meeting an immediate need of the people in your locality. I think internet and cellphone service are an incredibly well-documented, immediate need, heightened now more than ever, it goes back to the Foothills Forum survey a few years ago, and, and when you think about now, like I said earlier, long-distance learning, telecommuting, telehealth, these have become vital, urgent necessities for the people of Rapaha County, and I personally don't see how we, how we pass this opportunity up.
Madam Chair, I, I agree with you, absolutely, I think it is a great opportunity, I've always, always, since I've had Pete Monbroadband, thought of you, your company, and your team, a now expanded team as a catalyst, something with which we could start. So, again, this formalized presentation, you're coming here tonight with your whole team, sends a very strong message of your commitment to our county and your commitment for sticking around for a while, and my biggest concern, to your point, and you articulated very well, my biggest concern is that if we do get stuck in this big plan approach to do a business, we're going to miss an opportunity, and I think we need to seize an opportunity, and you obviously have shown a, a, a good commitment over a long period of time, and we know who you are, and I appreciate everything you've done for our community today, and I do hope that we can find a way. Again, I would, I would just say to my colleagues, let's, let's make sure we're absolutely clean on the CARES Act front, and then also from a public procurement standpoint, we need to, we need to do things right, and, yeah, I'm committed to finding a way, and if it's not with the CARES Act money, then let's find another way to get it done as quickly as we can, so we can start moving forward.
So what do we need to do then? Do you want to instruct Mr. Curry to work with county attorney and Mr. Goff to see if we can get this thing, the wrinkles ironed out, the questions?
Time is of the essence, so if the board is inclined to allocate CARES Act money for this use, every day is a critical day. Say it again, I didn't catch that, every day is a critical day, if, if, if the board wants to move in this direction, to make sure that we can get it moving.
Well, I'm just reading in the newspaper, I haven't talked to anybody in Culpeper, but I mean, they, they did this under the Emergency, Emergency Act, so.
I think their continuity of government ordinance waived a lot of the procurement requirements, and we chose not to do that.
We didn't do that.
Yeah, so you could, we can use your continuity of government ordinance to do that, and you could waive any, any of your ordinances, quite frankly, through continuity of government, there's, at some point in town, you start stretching that pretty thin.
But can I toss something out there, what if we were to continue this meeting a couple of days, would, how much time do you think you would need to find out some of these answers?
I don't, I can't answer that, I know Mr. Goff won't be back in town till next week.
So I guess Monday's too early, right? I was just, I was just kidding. Wednesday or Thursday of next week, is that a possibility?
Well, we have to, first have to notice the meeting, which we need three days to do, you know, I would suggest October 5th, well, well, time is critical, I will wait till your October 5th meeting.
A regular scheduled meeting?
I think that makes sense if we approached it at the October 5th meeting, I think that gives us time to figure out all of the pieces that need to fall into place, and devise a timeline to move that forward, I mean, I'd be willing to commit to a meeting on a weekly basis if that's necessary to move this forward, and then we can have a joint public hearing or a joint meeting with the planning commission to get any pieces cleaned up that we may need to, to take care of there.
And I'm sure we'd like to see whatever contract we're going to put together for the county, so we know what coverage expectation is and that type of thing, and schemes, and so that we can set the expectations to citizens of what they will get if we look forward.
This initial, this initial thing, I think, we're going to have a big impact, because we, we know we need it, and we know the hearings, and my son Matt has been driving this county, he knows it very well, Jeff's lived here a long time, Evan grew up here, Daniel Clayton was on the wrestling team, football team, so we've got a lot of people that know the county intimately, and you drive down the road, and you see one house, and a mile later you see another house, and that's all there is, that's probably not a high-impact area for us, but you drive down block mills, and we've got half a thousand houses down block mill, but you go down some little side roads, and we can't get, and you start them all south of you, guess what they're looking at? Red on the mountain, 100%. We're going to pick out 30, 40, 50 people walking down that road, just because that's where it's at. Then you got the Byford Road, and Fletcher's Mill Road, there's nothing there, and Brutus Hill Road, guess what happens? We're all red up, they all get it, that's a big impact, okay? So we're picking, we're picking the sites that you think we're going to have the most immediate impact, and the reason is, is because the more cash flow we have, the more we can do on our own, and I don't want to ask you all for anything, I'd rather just do it myself, but we get over a hump, we're kind of like a tween company right now, where we need to hire more staff, so we've invested in more staff, we really can't afford what we're doing, we can't really afford right now to put up some of these other units, but we're going to do it anyway, because I see it as a step forward, so our expense line is here, our income line is here, sooner or later, the income line's going to be here, the expense line's going to be there, you know that, okay? So, but we are investing, because we see a good return, plus we have customers, we have for 10, 12 years now, they don't go anywhere. This is Detective Richard Woodson says, we're there when you call us, most of the time, and that's why we need more staff, so we can get there quicker, and if we're not fixing things because of going more random towers, we got more time to serve, you know how many people call us up, and their DAG on P O E is unplugged? Some little old lady can't get internet, we put out there, people lose that plug, we have, we root her out, but some people have got 14 devices, we was at the other day, 16 devices on one, one day, and he's not there now.
Was that your house, Mr. Woodson? It's probably my house.
So whatever we do, we're still going to have service, we're going to see people all the time, because we have enough people to do it. So we're investing, so we can do that, and we want to build it ourselves, but we'll take everything we can get, because it'll be quicker.
Well, thank you for taking the public's evening into consideration, too, and making space available for that also.
Madam Chair, just a practical question, and maybe one for Mr. Fraser, as you're contemplating a continued meeting that occurs, maybe, if we have about half a million dollars in undisputed CARES Act funds at this time, is that correct, Mr. Curry?
Yes.
Okay, and, and we have, we have a request here, that's a substantial portion of that, so as we consider possible support for this broadband infrastructure project, it kind of throws a monkey wrench into our other possible allocation of funds to use other important buckets, including fire rescue and, and business support, so I'm just wondering how we're going to navigate that. Is the idea then to collect comment from everyone this evening, continue the meeting, and in the interim period, try to sort out how we're going to do this from a financial standpoint? Because if we were to fund this, if it was permissible to fund this out of CARES Act money, I think that leaves very little to, to send out to fire rescue, for example, and other people we need all.
If we're going to dig into that discussion, I think you can probably exceed it, Mr. Schumacher, thank you very much.
Thanks, good presentation, thank you.
I mean, does anyone want to take a first slide with the pinata, some rough numbers sketched out, I think we can maybe get this worked out. I think we can maybe get this worked out relatively quickly. I'm not available much next week. I suppose we allocate another $50,000 to the schools and leave it to their discretion what buckets they've spent it in. I suggest we set aside, looks like there's 109. So 239,000 marked up for fire and rescue now. Basically 250,000 when you consider the public health expenses. But that's sort of redundant between lines 12 and 12D. So I think somewhere around $200,000 there would be fine. Maybe as low as 170,000. Mr. Curry, what do you expect for lines 12C and 12D? I'm not really clear on what the expectation is there.
I only heard from two fire companies regarding revenue interruption. And those were listed. Well, I heard from three. One said zero, and the other two were listed. So I assumed I might hear from the others and wanted to leave a road for that. And then I just put $10,000 per company toward the public account. There was one company that provided information. It was 3,000, which is obviously much smaller than the average. So I don't really know what the others might say. Another has asked for N95 masks, which is not very expensive. And there was the road that you already committed to for PPE previously.
Right. But I'm trying to work with the 500,000 we have left. I mean, the HVAC and the public health expenses on those 12 and 12D, I mean, that's just sort of be dealt with in one disbursement, I think. And if you've heard 3,000 from one company, I'm thinking if we just do like 25,000 for it, that should be sufficient. And I mean. You've had the request out to the companies now for over a month, if I remember correctly.
At least three weeks.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I mean, I'd like to leave some money, but if we've been asking for a month and we haven't gotten an answer, I kind of think it's time to cut away and stop fishing.
The expenses are ultimately going to be paid by the county's operational expenses and fire and rescue. It's the interruption, it's the item that wouldn't otherwise be funded. And Amisville and Spiritful Firearms are two of the largest fundraising interruptions.
So to my mind, looking at the way this breaks out, I'd be inclined on those rows, number 12 to 12D, to leave about $170,000 in there. 15, or maybe just leave the 15 out and just put 30 in 12D.
Would you like me to type these into the spreadsheet to keep track? I'm hearing one board number. I don't know what your thoughts are here.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to spit it all here.
Go down, and you can move around.
Well, I mean, if we think if we get the numbers aligned, then we can worry about which lines they go into a little bit better. But I think about $170,000 between those seven lines is correct. Because we have 110,000 almost in actual requests. And then everything else is not really documented.
If I could throw another idea out there. Is there some of these expenses? No, that's not the right way to start that. Do we have expenses in the budget that we may have allocated money for out of the general fund that we could take care of with some of this money? And then that would free up our general fund money to do something else with the broadband that we wouldn't have to worry about CARES Act funding?
Yes. And you've essentially done that already with some of the money that went to schools. And there are, I've tracked, added a new column. I did mention this actual eligible expenditure in FY '20. And from an accounting procedure, every time we spend something that is COVID-eligible, we tag a special code down to the budget line. So we can run it on forward and so forth. So we know how much we've spent for that. So I did report that to the state as the maximum that we could report. And that was $282,000 in FY '20.
We're pretty close to that figure anyway.
That we can account for. Our goal here is to, one, push money out. But two, is account for 1.2 billion, 286 million dollars of eligible expenses. That's the key. If we can't account for that number of expenditures, eligible expenditures, then we have to give money back. We don't want to do that.
Yeah.
So if we can account for it, and we can, the cash is already in the bank.
Unlike some buckets of money that are considered free money by certain people in this county, I don't consider this free money. It's basically our children and grandchildren's tax dollars. And, you know, so you build a school, for instance. You get a 20-year loan. So maybe your kids and somebody else's kids. And sometimes your kids' kids are still using the school while you still have the loan on it.
So our kids and our grandkids and great grandkids don't have pensions.
Right. But I mean, with this, you know, we might be spending this money on enrollment, but at least maybe we'll be helping somebody down the road a little further. So I just keep bringing that back up. And, you know, there's different ways to look at how we, what buckets we can put money in and take it back out of.
Right. And now, of course, the benefit of spending general fund dollars, you don't have to do that until December 30th. And you don't have to be eligible. And you don't have to concern about those things. You do have to worry about zoning and procurement and that.
But we can take care of that in a fast track fashion.
Whatever the board's willing, you know, wants to do, yeah.
I like Ms. Smith's idea of starting with fire and rescue. So maybe we could, let's work through fire and rescue and make sure that we're all comfortable with that total. Just as sort of one area of focus. I wasn't keeping track of all your numbers, so.
That's okay. I mean, I think the concrete numbers that we have, that there's a high degree of comfort with reimbursement, are the 53,000 and the 56,000. I think those are concrete numbers that we have documentation for. And they're marked with a high degree of confidence so we can get that money out the door. Items 12 and 12D were the two that sort of seemed redundant to me. And because if we just make an open request line for public health expenses, and we've heard from one company, it's about $3,000, it just seems to me like maybe we should park not more than $20,000 there.
Which one is that?
That's line 12D. That's assuming seven companies that not quite $3,000 each.
What's the nature of that contemplated expense?
For Washington, there was a number of items. It sounds like we printed the paper out where it's in the stack.
It's the last page.
It's mostly PPE.
Okay.
I think some of the companies were talking about putting in the, some different technology to help with that as well.
Some airstrubber type equipment. And that was what was originally in 12. And I just started adding letters as they seemed to go together.
Okay.
So I mean, I think as long as everything sort of fits under that description, that's a, to me, seems like a very big use of the monies and a pretty high degree of confidence that that much could be expended.
So I am tracking behind you.
Mr. Curry, how do I reconcile the 53,000 in line 12A for Amisville to this request?
It's just average rounded up to the nearest.
Well, it says, what's rounded up? I don't see, I see grant totals 55 and 50.
Yeah. So 55,000 and 50,000 public six, those were from 2008 to 2018.
So you're just, I see. So it's typically a two-year experience and then?
Whereas Spiritful provided like a five-year experience.
Okay, I got you. Sorry. I thought it was a snapshot, but we didn't have the number there. I got you. All right. So those are, and those are the only two companies that we've heard from?
I heard from another saying they didn't have any Spiritful Rescue as far as business interruption revenue costs.
And so business interruption now under amended CARES Act rules, it's, we're absolutely clean and?
Yeah, so it's like any of our other small business grants, only in this case because we're legally able to donate money to fire or rescue in the county, you can just hand the money to them directly. Whereas counties just can't hand money to a business without a good service rendered or to some nonprofit. So that's where you have to find that intermediary to do it legally.
And company four's been doing their fundraisers. So I assume that's why we have occurred from them. Company nine stopped doing fundraisers. Carnival or something stopped.
Year ago.
Yeah.
And I don't think Casselton does much in the way of fundraising.
No.
Just given their demographics.
We had a turkey shoot.
I don't know if you're doing it this year.
So I did, if you look at the spreadsheet on the screen, the top right cell, I did put the remaining values up there. It's also at the bottom, so you have to keep scrolling back and forth.
Okay.
So what does everyone think about line 12C, keeping an open request to volunteer fire and rescue for business interruption? There's $60,000 in there right now. And I mean, I think I've spoken to, we've been asking for three weeks. And the numbers haven't materialized. I just wonder if there's any wisdom in leaving money in that line? Or should we cut that line?
Your answers to some of the other roads made? Answer that question for you? There may not be enough to go, right?
Right. I mean, that's my concern.
Did you want to go back up and enter something for these schools?
You said 50K for the schools?
I mean, I think it's about $90,000 still sitting in here that the schools are asking for. I really think the school administration knows best how to spend whatever money we can send them.
What do we, Mr. Curry, can we do? Can you give a ballpark or even an accurate sample of what we've allocated to schools so far?
Guess right here.
Going back to our original meeting. And then the additional 56,000 for the Wednesday program. I just wanted to think about it from a big picture standpoint.
Yeah, that's 36525.
36525, okay.
Oh, wait.
Same fire was more like 550.
397.
397.
397, including the 56,000 from our recent meeting?
There you go. 453, 791. And yeah, from the accounting perspective, those dollars that were spent in FY '20 came right back to the board at the end of fiscal year.
And do we now have that number locked in? What did we get back?
It's not locked in.
350.
That's another hedge against revenue issues, of course. Which doesn't seem to appear to be a concern yet.
Not yet, but we'll soon find out.
There's one audit in there.
Okay, so the grant total again is 453, 791. I know this is really exciting for the public to watch people.
I feel like I'm going to finish that.
It's like watching paint dry a water or something. And then what's our total CARES Act?
Those are we?
Okay. All right, so right now we're at 35% of our total allocation to the schools. Again, I just, just trying to balance interest here. So Ms. Smith, you were proposing an additional how much for the schools?
50,000, which would take it to basically almost 500,000 even.
And Dr. Curran's legal, they could scoot behind the backs, isn't it? Yeah. I thought you, you're very cognate. What is that 50,000 intended for?
Well, in the proposal that we've given you, we have the 51, 905, and 31, 568. It's already extended, so we'll put it right toward that and put that off.
Okay.
So that it's already, yeah.
So probably the cleanest way to do it would be to put it right into line seven. The PPE desk barriers, all that kind of thing.
That's what I did behind you.
Great, thank you so much, Gary. We're a well-oiled machine around here sometimes.
Okay, so. So you said it takes us to 500,000 dollar?
Basically, yeah. So it's about a little over 500,000 for schools.
503, 791.
Thank you.
Which leaves 400,000, 237,000. You could, we have made expenditures that you have not recognized as CARES. I know that's confusing. These are expenditures that happened in FY '20 and some in FY '21 that were for reasons that were significantly different than what the money was originally budgeted for. Or was for sneeze cards and things like that. And so you can account for that with CARES money if you wanted to and a free of general fund. Or you could not account for that with CARES dollars and use those CARES dollars for something else. It's really an accounting exercise. In parallel, we have to make real money, cash, you know, get it spent somewhere. But if you're trying to make the 400,000 stretch as far as possible, then you would not want to account for this business.
After this, I'm in favor of maybe holding off until the 5th. See how much we could actually work with.
Do we want to go ahead and put the 300,000 or so in place for broadband this evening? I mean, I think if we're going to be asking staff to do that, that we need to, that we need to show that on paper.
I would also ask if there, for discussion on 15A, which is remaining Chester Gap EMS expenses, which matter as landed out of Warren County for Super Rec's agenda in October. And we're hopeful to share that cost 50/50 with them. So I've shown the balance, essentially the balance of what would be needed in FY '21 through December 30th, based on what was already allocated by the board, which is 18, not 49.
Are they going to, is Warren County going to pay for, you know, going 50% of what we've already expended? Or is it just moving forward, they're going to go in 50%?
We haven't really got there. We've asked them to go forward, but we're hoping to get something. And if we get a hook in, then maybe we'll try to roll the clock back. They, as you know, they have a lot more money, CARES money than we do.
Yeah.
They don't want to get too greedy.
Just enough.
Just enough. The right amount. And pepper it.
So then what would the board like to see us do then? Put a freeze on like the 323 and see what staff can come back with on October 5th?
And so like I said before, this is an accounting exercise. And you could account for it now, but not allow any dollars to go out the door. Until you make them the next day.
Yeah, and with the 350,000 that came back from the schools, all other things being equal, I mean, that's, those would be unrestricted funds.
Sure. And we didn't spend every dollar on the general fund side either.
Right. Right.
But fund balance is good for a lot of reasons in here. It gives you flexibility to go forward. And, and if a broadband partner comes along, and you need a half a million dollars, you have a half a million dollars. But it has to be the right opportunity with all the right protections in place.
Well, I mean, I think we need to spend the money in Chester Gap, the programs in place. I would tend to put a marker on that line for 15,000. And then we had several members of the Parks and Rec Authority come speak to us this evening. I'd like to know from the board how you're disposed to handle that line as well.
One thing they didn't mention is, I had a gross 16,000 after talking to the treasurer. And it was 11,000 was about the value of the fodder stack race over the last few years, and they didn't, they didn't add, they didn't add to that anything from lost pavilion rental, and that might be the difference to the 13,000 that Mr. Van Haker was talking about. So that would be eligible because it is a business interruption. Revenue didn't come in.
Um, Mr. Van Haker, do you, I didn't hear a specific number that you're seeking. We have the $60,000 cost estimate. And that was based on some kind of estimate done some time ago. You have, we already allocated 12,000, it was $12,000?
Yeah, so one, one could argue that that $12,000 was already appropriated for this purpose, so.
Right.
It's not a, it was, it wasn't not a non-touch bathroom at that point in time, and that's really what we're hanging around here that, you know, that brings us into the COVID realm. We can do it in a new, better way.
That's right.
So if it's a $60,000 project and you already allocated, appropriated 12,000, you could probably appropriate the balance and get the project done. You could have, and if it was an accounting exercise and you need to find more accounting dollars, the lost revenue is, is easy one to do.
Right. I mean, I mean, I've heard from a lot of people for years that there are no public restrooms. And that's a central location, obviously a very diligent board, I'd be inclined to support that. But I think they've, they've already, we've already appropriated 12,000, so I think whatever we're considering here should be no more than whatever the balance would be. And is the 60,000, is that, was that ballpark? Was it specific? Was it?
We had budgetary quotes and with contingency in putting in a factor for the non-touch features, we're looking at about 59,000 to do the project. But we did get the appropriation for 12, but we do have about 13,000, not 11,000, a $13,000 shortfall. It's not just fodder stagnant, completely advanced. So the 12,000, even though it was a partial appropriation, what we asked for, for the restrooms, actually that was pre-COVID, and now we've had a $13,000 shortfall, and we still have a project which is going to cost a little bit more in order to execute.
What's, if, if, if this project goes through as intended, what's the public access going to be in terms of days of the week, time period, all that stuff? I mean, is right now, restrooms really not accessible most of the time?
Restrooms have not been opened up because of a number of reasons, which you're familiar with. When the successful year-round non-touch restroom is available, then it'd be seven days out of seven with a deal for service.
Say that again.
Seven days out of seven.
Okay.
In other words, all the time during the non-touch.
I don't think anyone else has any thoughts.
Well, I mean, I think this is a good, a good long-term project to get done in the context of spending these money. I think if the treasurer has high degree of confidence getting them $10,000 under, under line 16A, and then funding half of line 16 with $30,000, that gets $40,000 to get the ball rolling. And when there was 12,000 in their original budget line item this year. So I would think that would be a, a good start.
I'm not sure what their bank savings account is. It's not very big.
I'm not, I don't have that with me tonight, but I know it's, we're around, probably around 15 or so thousand dollars.
That sounds great, yep. So they might not be able to do a $60,000 project with the 30, 10, 12, and what's in their bank. That'd be, we're not too close to comforting.
Yep.
It's a binary decision.
Well, I mean, the board also has a contingency fund, so if there was a shortfall, we could reconcile that later from the contingency fund. Sounds like it would be like $5,000 or something like that, that we might need to look at later.
Uh, yeah, so, but then going into a contract bid or whatever they've already done, they need to know they have the money before they sign the, the contract line. And now for unforeseen expenses that could come up during the project, that's where the board could come in, save the day, save.
And we can't do the jaw pathway.
Right, you're going to do it or not?
It is our only part, and I have had people talk to me about the ADA accessibility. Higher leaning towards supporting the restroom. And the touch list is, there's a lot of places that aren't touchless, and I'm sure that's where a lot of the expense is, so we can debate that all day, but I definitely think we need handicap accessibility.
If I may, when I look at your table, you have 64, the restroom, and 11 for loss of revenue. In a way, that's duplicating.
Correct.
Really, we only need one line.
Right.
That's the restroom.
Correct, but, I mean, there's a medium degree of confidence there, so, I mean, the accounting exercise is what makes me want to say, put 10 in the small business grant, just to get the money in your hands, and then say maybe you do 40 in the public health expenses line?
The goal's end to how we report is in state.
But I'd like to make sure that there's a contingency that it will be used for that because I'm, 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 you're, you're representing your board, but you're not the board. The board, what if the board made a decision to do something different with the money?
The board is eight to zero on this project, far as wanting to work.
I just want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding when they get the money. That this is what the board, this board intended it for.
I think that would be communicated to us.
Probably a very, very long time before they've got any more money.
Could, I mean, they already have 12, you have about $15,000 in your savings account for operating expenses. You're not operating, you're frankly doing a lot of the work yourself in the surveying effort recently, and you're not occurring a lot of expenses up in your recent meetings. Could we just fund the balance, which would be 48, and then hope they come in under their budget?
So if you're trying to cut the cloth to fit broadband, I'd rather fund that, portions of that from general fund, that if we find out there are deadlines that are issues, and we can't get things done in time, then only the CARES Act dollars would be time-sensitive. Any other dollars wouldn't. If you're looking to put general fund dollars into something, it'd be better to put it into that, that line, from an accounting perspective.
Into, into the recreational facility?
Into broadband.
Into broadband, okay.
Have more confidence that they can build up this little.
Right, I, I follow, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so I guess there's not a consensus on this lines. Anybody want to take a last bite of the apple to see if we can?
Just no.
I mean, I think part of 40, and 16, and 10, and 16A, and that puts $50,000 in their hands. And if we've already sent them 12, then they've got 62, which should be enough to do the project.
Okay. That's what I'm showing behind you right now.
Thank you very much for your party. All right, so I think we had sort of decided to skip these telephony and web-based service upgrades for time being.
Now I have multiple vendors peeking down the door. Because I just have to several, but just because they're vendors and salespeople.
I mean, I think, I think those are fine things to do, but I'm, I think.
I can't get it done in time, so.
That we can certainly always address those with general fund dollars. And probably should address those with general fund dollars.
Where are we right now?
On lines 18, 19, and 20.
Yeah, I agree.
And I feel the same way about line 22, the scanner.
I agree.
Let's take five. Get a stretch.
We're going to lose our audience.
Thank you. Let's take five and a break. Thank you.
I saw it.
Apologies, I don't have my gavel this evening, but I would like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone. No. All right. I need a traffic gavel is what I think I need. That takes us, we had kind of left off at line. Point three, which was the private-public school support. I'd be interested in hearing about this line from my peers on the board. Do you have any thoughts on it?
Madam Chair, I'm going to exit this discussion. I believe Wakefield Country Day School is part of it. Is, I served on the Wakefield Country Day School Board, and I don't think it's appropriate for me to be involved in that discussion, so.
You serve or serve?
I serve, definitely. And, you know, it's, I'm not comfortable being in on that discussion, so.
Okay.
I did distribute their letter to the board previously, and I did mention tonight that I previously provided in parking up the table.
I mean, I think these are, I just asked for everyone else's opinion, so I guess I'll give you a chance to voice your opinion. Mr. Frazier, Mr. Dante, do you have any thoughts on these?
I think they do a very good thing for the community with the school, but I don't know that we could give public funds, especially to that amount.
As you know, I love Wakefield. I think they're doing great things, and there were a lot of items in that that I don't think were related to CARES expenses. And unfortunately, I didn't really like them.
I think we have a copy of it. Do we have a copy of it?
Last week, you're looking for more. They answer things like buses.
I just think that the best way to deal with this may be to let CIC, its involved as exercise already through the businesses of the rapid, thank you, Mr. Curry. I just think that the best way to handle this may be to kind of fold this request into that process for RAPCE, Wakefield, Heartstone School, and if there should come a request from Benvenu, well, not Benvenu, Bellmead, to have them maybe involved in the conversation that way. And take the county out of the, out of the process. I'm not sure how you all feel about that.
I would be fine with that. I'm just not sure with the total budget that we'd be able to do much.
I was, I was just sort of thinking ballpark, thirty thousand, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And making a special stipulation on this amount that it has to be spent for educational and nonprofit expenses.
I think after COVID related, some sort of.
Well, that's correct. It would have to be for those sorts of organizations in a COVID-related expense.
Make it available to small business loans?
Correct, specifically geared toward educational institutions and nonprofit organizations.
So basically, the conversation, this would be set before, whether there'd be two buckets covering nonprofits for profit. The answer might be yes, and then one would be thirty thousand dollars added to the earlier request.
I think yes.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I think that would be good, right?
I just think it's clean. We know the process is already in place. It's set up to be fair, and it'll be managed by a third party, and and that way we can, we can deal with these requests objectively. And I know that a lot of these expenses are really critical things. And especially at RAPCE, I know I've already commented once, but it's really very impressive what they put in place there very quickly. All right, and that takes us to the lines twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, businesses rapid handings. I wonder, Martin Sturwitz, and what you may want to be involved in this conversation. I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts on that. Oh, excuse me, line twenty-five has been withdrawn. So it's lines twenty-four and twenty-six. What's our total, Gary, that we have filled in to this point?
He's here for me to go the other way. We have three hundred and five thousand, two thirty-seven remaining.
We have three hundred thousand dollars left. And it seems to me some of these lines sort of duplicate. Twenty-nine A and twenty-nine B?
Twenty-nine B is really a, it's an accounting line, funds that were already budgeted in tourism.
Oh, okay.
Are in twenty that were redirected in twenties, not new dollars, but they're dollars that we could account against our CARES Act liability if we needed to.
Okay. So this twenty-nine A is really the new ask, correct?
Correct, and so from the earlier conversation, it sounds like thirty is being contemplated.
That's correct, for the special bucket. So, Mr. Winston, just so you know, we decided on that line twenty-three, we decided basically to fold that into the businesses rapid handic, small business grant program line, and allocate thirty thousand dollars for that use.
So it's like all specific, school, non-school, and non-profit specific, which is not to say, you know, nonprofits couldn't apply for other funds, but these particular funds.
So line twenty-three, the total amount was thirty thousand dollars, and was added to businesses rapid handic?
That's correct. So we are essentially folding that into line twenty-one A. And so, and there's about approximately three hundred thousand dollars left, Mr. Curry?
Yes.
So, I mean, it seems like we're down to businesses rapid handic broadband, and smaller amounts that I would say we could probably account for in other ways. Those are big ticket items, so I'd like to hear from all of us that we're supposed to handle these items.
I mean, I think the big challenge on broadband, as Mr. Curry alluded to it a couple of times, is what can actually be done by the December thirtieth deadline? So that really puts us in a position where we don't, we might not want to use CARES Act money for that purpose, right?
More scripty can be implied. You can read these guidance, the guidance document, the curriculum, ask questions multiple times, and get multiple ideas. It's pretty clear in a lot of places that it's intended, the good services intended to be rendered before December thirtieth, even if the expenditure's trampled. You can spend money three months later, but the good service should be rendered before December thirtieth. But if your standard pyramid practices have you buy something like one of your chunks, then it, it has to probably understand, you know, your typical pyramid directions. You can pre-buy some things. We don't do a whole lot of that. We do it maybe for annual memberships and things like that. I just don't have a ton of confidence to think that if we've got a check to keep on broadband in November, that our clock is done, and they would take five years to do it, and it's okay, and that'd be great. I don't have confidence that I would be able to find that it's okay. I just don't know. It'll take, it'll take the better part of a month to get a contract, right?
Right.
It's a lot of money that the citizens in people in broadband want to make sure everybody knows who's getting what for how much. If it doesn't work out, how would they get their money back, or probably hard won or in a wiz? Not in pocket here. If their provider fails, the equipment is accountable.
I do know that there is a school of thought, too, that, you know, there will be an extension on the end of December.
A lot of people are saying that. Now, that would take Congress to act.
So, I mean. But, I mean, I just think, you know, optimistically, if there is that chance, and we have this money. Now, to me, it's not free money. It's an opportunity to advance something that we should be doing regardless.
I guess one thing we could do potentially is we could set aside some placeholder funds for broadband tonight, and then October fifth. If, if legal research on CARES Act rules or something else changes, means that we're gonna have to approach funding in a different way, then that money could come back into an additional CARES Act discussion on October fifth for other purposes.
I would love to see a schedule, a detailed schedule, how, what's gonna get done and by when. And, well, you know, the audit's not here yet. I think the board will find that we'll add a fair amount to the fund balance from FY twenty. So there should be general fund dollars that can go to work for critical projects like this.
Correct.
And maybe end up going to fifty-fifty type thing, or whatever percentage you think you can really get done. Depending on some of that research and talking to other people and how risky they are, and we want to be a little less risky than the risky people, right? So if there are problems to be had, then we supply them right, right?
Yep.
My guess is there's probably a way to do a phased approach where you could take a small chunk, prove the concept, prove the contracts, what we want. And then, you know, you're not, three hundred thousand, and then you might be a hundred, a hundred and fifty, and just approve what, which is planning on doing.
Excuse me.
I've done that, too.
Well, I mean, if we, if we want to do something kind of clean, we could look at that installation up through Red Oak. It's about two hundred thousand dollars. Part two hundred thousand dollars in that line. Or we could go.
What's your timeline for Red Oak? How long would it take?
Mr. Johnson wants to see what our tower looks like at Rixville. We're planning on having that built by the middle of October, or maybe a few days later. In terms, in terms of building these towers out, I think, depending on the degree of difficulty, we're looking at one every two weeks, because they're not that difficult. So we've got twelve towers, so if you're twenty-four weeks. If we're doing it during the winter time, of course, it's gonna be snow and ice, so we have some lanes there. So probably by May of next year, so I would think most of them will be built out. I'm perfectly fine with doing it. You know, I told people before when I was applying for a job, I said, give me a job, give me a task. And if I do a good job, then give me some more. So I'll do it that way out there.
Well, that's what Mr. Curry is alluding to, in what he says we're adding to our fund balance, such as we're getting some money back from the schools that they didn't spend last year. It's coming back to the counties. We will add it to the fund balance to the tune of about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, probably. And so that would be something, because that's one-time money, and what you're doing is a one-time expense. That would be something that we could easily shift some of that money in the direction of this project. I do think it makes sense to use CARES Act money for this. I mean, we're really down to just a few numbers now, folks, you know, are we thinking two fifty, two hundred? And then, and work through some of these other smaller lines, or what are you, what are you all thinking?
The other benefit of splitting the broadband money between general fund and CARES Act is that we can avoid getting into debate with somebody on what is expansion and what is strengthening. We can make sure the CARES money is in proportion to new customer acquisition as opposed to partnering together and stuff.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Frazier?
I really think it's not as questionable. I mean, just because he's got equipment and a location now, it's not a tower. If we put up a tower, it has the ability to be, help its safety with it.
Correct.
So I really think that we, without making a stretch, that we can use CARES money for it. And I think that, I mean, personally, I'd like to see us just sit on this at least through October fifth to see what we can find out between now and then.
I'm willing to stick my neck out just as far as the board. Said I'm willing to stick my neck out just as far as the board does, right, altogether.
So, Mr. Schumacher, what's your, of your tower build proposals, Red Oak, that was bang for the buck in terms of additional customers?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is Red Oak, is Red Oak kind of the, is that installation probably the most bang for buck in terms of new customers?
I'm thinking probably, Aaron Mountain is probably, because we've got Battle Mountain, it's gonna be covered in Cassington area, and then on the Newtown side, there's a lot of people that we can't get because of that, because it's just through the trees a little bit. I would say Battle is number one. Probably Mr. Ryan's place is number two. And then Aaron Mountain is right behind that, number three. I mean, those two are, Battle Mountain is definitely number one. And then Mr. Ryan and Aaron Mountain is probably equal, whichever one you want to pick. Red Oak, we're not sure about. I'm fairly convinced that the deal we're working with Mr. Johnson, and I don't want to negotiate with him too much because he's taken too much of my money to make it happen, but I said that joke anyway, but he's, he's gonna want compensation. I don't blame him. I would. So, but he also wants to serve people in county as well, so, but he needs to see some stuff first to be comfortable with what we're doing. And that sounds to me like what Mr. Curry's talking about, and I'm perfectly happy to do that. We're gonna do that with the tower. We're gonna pay for it at Rixville, so come see it. And that's a spot that we can't hide for, but we're gonna show you how that's gonna look, and then you can see it, since the trees is done, I think you'll find that you'll be able to see it.
I think Red Oak would give us an opportunity to cover parts of the county with the eight hundred megahertz radio system that we may have had trouble with. I don't know how much it hasn't picked up with this new system coming off of Cherry Hill, but I think there's still some pockets that aren't covered very well.
And the board would, for, you would have to waive the microwave provision and a few other things back off to accommodate the areas and any potential public take use. But that's starting, and they weren't going to see boards only to do that.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
Please keep in mind, this is unlicensed frequencies, Steve, in the three, six, five, you have to go through the FCC for it. It's still a very low frequency. I mean, if, if it was a problem, health license, the FCC reports on that. I don't have them, but unlicensed stuff means anybody can do it. If it was licensed, now you'd be concerned about it. But I don't think that we have to be, you know, you're giving out more radiation with your microwave and your cell phones and some other things than we are without that.
Madam Chair, for tonight's purposes, why don't we put a number like one hundred and fifty thousand, which is about half, until we can have the meeting in October. That would at least get Rich enough to, to give his plan in place, get the contract going, and we'll have what we need in a test, at least one or two. I mean, that almost gets you battling in there, and it's just a little short. And we know it's working.
Well, I think we're just down to a couple of dollars now. I said two, you said one fifty, so, I mean, either one's fine. I'd like to see it at more than half. That's why I said two. But we, I guess we can split the difference at one seventy-five. Does that sound reasonable? Okay. And that way we're at about half of the investment. And knowing we have some of that fund balance building, we can look at, you know, using that for the, for the balance of the project. Mr. Curry, does that give you an acceptable degree of satisfaction in beginning to move the project forward, having heard from all the board members present this evening?
Well, I think my step, first step would be with Mr. Goff and my peers to really drill into what they've learned and the risks they're willing to take, to make sure you understand what those risks may be.
Yep.
And then, you know, steel contract, like, which I'm working with Mr. Schumaker, to see if we can get some, these straw man put together to start with.
Thank you. And then we just have these other lines to discuss with, if I'd like, from the other board members.
Yep. Yes.
And you did get this, you, you did get the school money in there? I feel like we've lost over that discussion pretty quickly.
Yes.
Yeah, you did.
Well, with a hundred and thirty thousand, we could conceivably go back and just pick up line seven C to get thirty thousand spent. We know that the schools already spent that, it's just a reimbursement.
Do we want to, um, pick up the full bet, you know, with seven and seven C? Fifty-one nine oh five, right, fifty thousand?
That's what I was thinking.
What are you looking at?
Uh, go ahead and pick up line seven C, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, pick up that additional thirty thousand, then we've got basically a hundred thousand left.
And what's the nature of line seven C?
Uh, the money's already been spent, and we have a high degree that it is reimbursable.
So, it's just cleaning it over time?
Right, so we're keeping a running total of expenses that we'll report out each time, just so you know that that is there and is all there is eligible, so we'll be spending out.
All right. Okay.
And I don't know what my peers think, but given the nonprofits and businesses and schools are all being, put into the, the same
Yep.
distribution, I would like to see us boost that a bit more.
I think, you know, I, I don't want to be the dead horse, and this was, definitely doesn't want me to be this dead horse, but, I mean, I, I would be a lot more comfortable adding to the small grant nonprofit bucket of CARES Act money if there was a commitment that all the money was going directly to businesses, nonprofits, and none of it was going to any kind of marketing campaign. I mean, that's, that's, I should have been more clear when I, when I spoke at the very, at the very first CARES Act public hearing, because I just, I, I do think that this should be direct relief to businesses, and I've said it already, so I don't, I don't need to repeat. So, I'd be comfortable bolstering that, bolstering that amount that goes into that small business grant category, but I really, again, just speaking for myself, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of sixty-five thousand being set off to the side for a marketing campaign.
Well, I, I think the way to accomplish that is if we add, if we're gonna add, add the line twenty-nine A. And, and I, I have to say, I'm, I'm the one who put forward the idea of putting it in a combined line to allow the Businesses of Rapid Handic to have more agility to decide what to spend it on.
Yeah.
When I said that, I didn't expect that it would be a spring marketing campaign. I thought it would be, meet urgent needs, and if anything, be a fall marketing campaign. And, and less be spent on that, and more be spent on direct relief, but we don't give exact direction, we get what we get.
If I, if I've got any complaints at all, it was because we gave Businesses of Rapid Handic that money last time. Nobody complained about what we did for the school, nobody complained about what we did for fire and rescue. The only complaints I got was because we gave money to fire and rescue, especially the way we did it with those screens. And I, I really think that the money that they've already got, and really, I don't think that we can actually give it to them, or say we're giving it to them, but we're actually giving it to Rapid Regional Commission, so, now, really, I don't think that you're in a position to even be asking for it the way you have it. But I'm, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, a dialogue, I'm just talking to the board members. I don't really think that we should put any more money in that bucket, if I can steal your phrase for a few minutes. I really think that, that we need to get a bigger bank for the bucket if we're gonna be doing something. And that's why I've been, you know, once I heard this broadband proposal, that's where I, I, I thought some bad.
Well, I think by putting the money in there for nonprofits and education, uh, we've already increased the bucket.
Well, that's thirty thousand, I don't think we should put any more in here.
So, I mean, I guess that's my point, so the, the total sum is now up to ninety thousand, sixty thousand of which is small business, and then, uh, thirty thousand of which would be nonprofits and education.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that should be it for maybe this round, especially tonight. I mean, I don't know why we'd have to blow through six hundred thousand dollars.
And that's total funding of, to small businesses of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars when you take into account the money that we've given for that.
But, but again, if you go back to what I initially said, the way it's set up, that money could go to three, four, or six different businesses, the way it's set up, sixty thousand dollars with a maximum of twenty. It wouldn't take long, but that money could just disappear. So, unless we come up with a better plan, I don't think we should put any more money in that, in that category.
If I understand the way you were explaining it, if you have five people apply, then the numbers are larger. If you have fifty people apply, then it drops depending on a percentage. So, it wouldn't be that, it wouldn't be that only five would get five grand. It would be if you had fifty apply versus five apply, then everybody gets a little bit less.
Right, but the complaints I've seen, and we didn't ask for any clarification, we might have businesses that walk away from the table with money that may not have even lost that.
Well, they're, they're forced to prove it and submit their documentation for the grant to earn the points. Well, I would suggest that this is an, an area that may be available for you as we approach December thirtieth. If you've been unable to push dollars out the door, which, crazy as it sounds, is a concern, you would have applications in, and you could open a second round and essentially fund additional to people who, the initial four Ds, or it could be a way you could further compensate or invest in the, in the businesses or nonprofits at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we just, it seems like you pick up the paper, you look at something almost every day, some business is closing up, and, you know, if we gave a business that was closing up an additional two, three thousand dollars, that would help them, but they would walk away with two, three thousand dollars, so.
And, and that two or three thousand dollars might buy them dinner, or might, you know, pay for a meal at some other restaurant or something. If it can stay in, in our local county, that's good, it'd be reinvested around in circles, that's what we want to accomplish, rather than buying widgets from China.
Right. Still, I'd like to caution the board members to just maybe sit on the rest of the federal.
What's, what's our balance now? Ninety-six thousand, seven sixty-four. I just wanted to clarify that for the schools, I, I changed their numbers to the exact ask for the letter fifty-one nine oh five, thirty-one five sixty-eight.
Great.
Being on the library board of trustees and, um, advocate for Ms. Weekly submitted, which was a very modest amount for some operational changes there, eleven seventy-five.
So, let's go ahead, I mean, I'm of the opinion to fund that, I'm of the opinion to fund the four H nonprofit, and I'm of
Sorry, four H has, while you haven't directly funded them and couldn't, they would have to go through the non, well, we could, probably, so they do that. They have been getting funded through the schools.
Oh, okay.
Right, so this wonderful Wednesday, well, this is the wrong order, right words. And the summer program is investing in the four H center, so you could choose to invest separately as well.
I mean, I, I think that those would all be fine lines to park money in. And I, I think that the trailer's still a good use of, of money as well, because I, we certainly have had times when we needed one, and, and the V-Dots were all in service, and we, we don't know if we're gonna have events in the future that.
Could you explain what that is? I'm, I'm not familiar with the.
It's like when we, when we first went into shutdown and we were asking for those programmable lit signs. I mean, we could use them not just for emergency related situations, but also special events in the county, things of that nature.
In this case, it would be used for COVID-nineteen.
Yeah, in the future, in the future, it would be used for different things, but, you know, if you go into a comp up where it says, wear your mask, or maybe being social distancing, or, um, you know, when, when the outbreak first started, as you were going up the skyline drive, it would say, you know, shut the door, national park closed.
If I could caution the board on this one, if we were to get it, it shouldn't just sit around. We should actually use it periodically.
Well, I mean, I think we have enough, normally we have enough events in the county that we, we certainly could.
Yeah.
We should expect there will be a trailing expense, there will be maintenance, things will break.
What's that in here?
Things will, there'll be maintenance.
Right.
There will be maintenance, but things that are sitting around are good.
All right, well, I think that probably leaves us with, what, about fifty thousand dollars here? If, I don't, don't put this line on, it sounds like there's not a consensus to do that, but.
Well, uh, I don't have any, I didn't do anything for line thirty to say that. I didn't hear about that. I know Orange funded that, I'm not sure on the others. And, uh, but it's eighty-five thousand without thirty-three, without thirty. You can turn around.
I mean, I think if, uh, if Orange County funded it, if that was to their chair, uh, Mr. Frazier, it's probably a very, a good, uh, expense, and I would want to meet that as well, if more than felt some really.
Which one is that?
Uh, it's, uh, thirty, it's just three thousand, and if the other counties do, I think we should.
Alcohol substance abuse prevention. They're the ones that send you that little booklet that I gave, that annual report.
What's the nature of it?
Alcohol substance abuse prevention, so. You're unfortunate to, uh, DUI, probably have to seek counseling.
Maybe what's the actual, I mean, what are we, what are we funding? That's my question.
Oh, it's in a letter, it's in here somewhere, code of office.
District.
Office requirements and whatnot. Same as, uh, note for H, it was more of a business interruption.
Well, I'm, I don't know about the other board members, I'm satisfied that we've got a little bit of money left from reading at the beginning of October that we can resolve this, uh, with a fresh mind, uh, at October meeting, and then have the benefit of some further development of the council and, move forward, which balances the funds that are available. Everyone else? It's getting on toward ten o'clock, so.
Oh, it's still religion.
Hearing how the other boards are going, it's like three in the morning. So, uh, does anybody have anything to add? I have a motion for adjourn.
So, what?
Second, thank you, Mr. Donahue, please say aye. Aye, thank you.
Is that Frazier?
Yes, Mr. Frazier made the motion, Mr. Donahue seconded. Thank you, everyone, thank you.